Dialogue on Building Equitable and Inclusive Communities in the Americas. Expanding Access and Opportunities for All. Today's meeting will focus on strategic action for addressing brain drain, talent retention, and cooperation. I am advised by the Secretariat that we have the required quorum and may proceed with today's meeting. To begin, I submit for the consideration of this council the Draft Order of Business contained in document CD/OD-158/25, which was distributed by the Secretariat. If there are no objections, the Draft Order of Business is approved. Colleagues, as indicated in the concept note distributed by the Secretariat, CD/INF-659/25, the emigration of skilled professionals, commonly referred to as "brain drain," continues to pose significant challenges across the region, with the Caribbean being the most heavily impacted. The departure of skilled professionals, innovators, and future leaders from our countries represents a significant impediment to sustainable development, economic growth, and social progress. It is a drain on our human capital, hindering our ability to achieve the very integral development goals to which this council is dedicated. However, this challenge also presents us with an opportunity, an opportunity to reevaluate our national strategies, strengthen our regional collaboration, and create an environment where our most valuable asset or talent can flourish and contribute effectively to the development of our individual countries and the wider hemisphere. Today, we will delve into actionable strategies for retaining our skilled workforce, fostering an environment conducive to innovation and research, and exploring mechanisms for cooperation among member states. Our discussions will aim to identify good practices, share innovative solutions, and forge collective commitments to transform this challenge into opportunities for cooperation, collaboration, and development. We begin our panel presentations with Mr. Mathieu Makovec, Senior Economist at the World Bank, who will share insights into the challenges and opportunities presented by the migration of skilled people from our region. Mr. Makovec, thank you for joining us today. You have the floor.
Thank you very much for inviting me, your excellencies and authorities. It's a pleasure being here. My name is Mathieu Makovec. I'm a senior economist at the World Bank, and I've entitled today's presentation "Strengthening Regular Labor Migration Pathways and Global Skilled Partnership: A Possible Solution to Brain Drain in Latin America and the Caribbean." I hope you can hear me, otherwise let me know. Just a couple of words of background. The Latin American region is characterized by large migration flows, and of course, the recent trends, these structural trends are going to be impacted by changes in, recent changes in US immigration policies, but we also think that this structural trend will continue. There are currently more than 48 million people from the lack region outside their country of birth, and 70% of this large amount are estimated to reside outside the region. Countries of destination are shifting, also because of recent policy changes. More people are migrating to Europe and also within the region. And again, we can expect these trends to continue because of persisting gaps in living conditions, incomes, earnings between destination and origin countries, and also because of lack of opportunities at home and high informality and high unemployment, especially for youth at home. These trends affect in particular the Caribbean region, right, where we observe over 4.2 million migrants outside with a kind of a specific destination, the US, like 2.3 million in Dominican Republic, but also important intra-regional flows like to Trinidad and Tobago, the Bahamas, and Belize. And these trends in the CARICOM countries have increased substantially in the past 25 years by 45%. So these numbers are really stunning, and even more stunning are the number of, the extent of high-skilled migration. Basically, the countries in the CARICOM region are in the top 15 for immigration rate of the high-skilled population, that in some cases reach over 90% of the high-skilled population, and let's say that the range of total migration varies between 23% in Belize, to Guyana, almost 50% of the population, let's say, in adult age lives, right? And we have noticed that female high-skill migration is becoming an important component. Therefore, given this small size in the CARICOM countries, you know, there are very, very limited opportunities for high-skill graduates. So we are going to discuss today how we can turn this very serious brain drain problem into potential brain gain, which are the policy options that can change this course. And now to just put this in the context of what are the global trends. While this is happening in Latin America, at the same time, at the global level, we observe a big demographic shift, where in high-income countries, we observe a staggering decline in the working-age population with respect to the population in old age. And this number we reached before the end of the century, there will be only two people in working age for every elderly above 65. And you know, we observe also these trends in upper-middle income countries. So this aging is going to create immense labor shortages and demand for workers, like in high-income countries and upper-middle income countries, and in particular, in the area of the healthcare sector, in the area where new demands will be needed for older societies in high-income countries. There is an estimate, a recent report published by the World Bank, there will be, I'll show the link at the end, high-income countries, high-income countries and upper-middle income countries might face a shortage of 750 million workers by 2050. And at the same time, given that also low-income countries and lower-middle income countries are aging, they, these countries might face, you know, an outflow, an outflow of over 600 million workers. So there is clearly, let's say, a huge demand in the global north, and there is outflows in, let's call it, in the global south. But what we notice is that while there is abundant population available from lower and lower-middle income countries, the skills of the origin countries, let's say, do not match yet the skills in demand in destination countries. And as you can see for the graph, there is still not very much catching up with, let's say, secondary educational attainment or tertiary education attainment with respect to high-income countries. So origin countries need to do, to act fast, to invest in their skills and human capital in order also to respond not only to internal demands, but also to demands of the global labor market. And we also observe typically shortages in mid-skill occupations, in particular, we observe in manufacturing, mechanics and technicians, construction, healthcare and elderly care, ICT, renewable energy, and hospitality services and tourism services. And we'll see in the presentation that investing actually in the skill at origin can be, can trigger actually tertiary education achievements and improvement in the skill of the origin population, as in the case of the Philippines, where through the program of Philippine nurses to the US, we observed the increase in the stock of nurses at home. So what are the possible policy solutions? I'm mentioning what we call in the Gergon Global Skilled Partnership, so bilateral agreement in which destination countries invest in the human capital formation of migrants, country of origin, through training, creating potential for triple wins. So this means that these programs, in these programs, training takes place in the country of origin and is paid mostly by destination countries, right? Not entirely, but mostly. And basically, this Global Skilled Partnership, this training can take two possible tracks, a home track where trainees remain at home in the country of origin, and an away track where they immigrate abroad through regular labor, existing labor pathways, and are matched into, let's say, with employers abroad. There are some successful examples in the Asia-Pacific. Let's say, Australia and New Zealand have been pioneering this program with over 8,000 trainees from small islands since 2007, and with a high, you know, placement of trainees in destination countries. In Europe, the PALIM and then the TAM program between Morocco and Tunisia and Belgium successfully placed unemployed graduates in the ICT sectors. And other programs are, for instance, between Germany, Mexico, and Kosovo in the healthcare sector. There are more examples in the presentation, and I would like to just give, say, a couple of words about the one regional technical assistance that we are implementing in our World Bank finance by the Spanish government, where we are trying to enhance regular labor migration pathways between Spain, Colombia, Ecuador, and the Dominican Republic, and to pilot possible global skilled partnership in these three countries. Very quickly, did we identify, let's say, key five pillar of actions where we need to invest if you want to implement this global skilled partnership? It's important to have labor demand assessment at destination and at home with rigorous methods to understand what are the demands of employers and design training schemes according to the demand, but also to the demand at home, because these programs have typically circular migration components. So through the return of trained workers and workers with experience abroad, then there can be knowledge spillovers and transfer of knowledge at home in occupations that are also high, in high demand at home. It's important to understand what is the institutional migration ecosystems at origin, right, to address bottlenecks and challenges, and it's important to understand what is the supply of training at home to reinforce the training institutions at home, like TIVET or any educational providing institutions, and also to understand what are the gaps in terms of qualification between what is the demand abroad and the local offer. So it's about strengthening systems and educational institutions at home. It's important also to address financing, and here, there is an important law for multiracial, let's say, in addition to donors and destination countries that can fund this program, additional financing is needed to bring this program to larger scale. And finally, to other elements, is the monitoring and evaluation and assessment of these pathways, let's say, before, during, and after migration, and of course, the information and communication on what is available and how this program can be implemented is key at all stages of the process. I'll conclude, just to show some results, where we, let's say, in the case of Spain and Colombia, for instance, where we are already identifying occupations in high demand in both countries, and so we can select basically tailored training programs in these sectors, for instance, web developers in the technology and digitalization area, home care workers in the health and welfare sectors, waiters, cooks in the tourism and hospitality industry, et cetera. And of course, just to mention quickly to conclude, that we are having, let's say, an extension of this program also to actually pilot concretely GSP in one of the, in these three countries, and will be very interesting, interesting to hear your comments and to see whether you see an opportunity of pilot in this program in your countries and in your regions, and these are the other corridors where the bank is also engaged, between Kenya and Canada, and between Tunisia and Italy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Makovec, for sharing with us the findings of recent World Bank studies and the analysis on this important issue for our region. We will be happy to engage with you further to discuss cooperation opportunities. Next, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Leo Priville, Director of the CARICOM Single Markets and Economy Unit. Mr. Priville is joining us remotely. Mr. Priville, you have the floor.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Chair. Chair, and representatives of the members of the OAS, on behalf of the CARICOM Secretariat and the Secretary General, Dr. Carla Barnett, it gives me great pleasure to participate in this fifth session of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development for 2025, where the topic of human mobility in the Caribbean and its impact is being focused on. Chair, quickly, the Caribbean community is made up of 15 full member states and six associate members. Of those 15 full members, the Bahamas does not participate in the diverse form of regional integration established through the revised Treaty of Shagaram, which was signed in 2001, which gave birth to the CARICOM Single Market Economy. The member states consist primarily of small island developing states, except for the three larger member states by landmass, which are situated on the American continent. Haiti is the most populous member state, with a population of approximately 12 million people, and the remaining 13 member states participating in the CSME have a total population of about 6.5 million people. The economies of the member states have evolved from predominantly agriculture-based economies to the point that around 70% of the region is engaged in the services sector, excluding Haiti, with labor shortages currently in the health and education sectors, and this is linked to the exodus of skilled workers. Chair, when we observe the migration patterns in the Caribbean, the following picture emerges. From work done primarily by the International Organization on Migration, the IMO, the region is characterized by mixed migration flows. The Caribbean serves as a place of origin, destination, and transit for migrant workers with varying types of legal status and modes of arrival. These trends are characterized by high immigration rates, significant extraregional migration, a few instances of positive net migration rates, substantial loss of specialized human capital, and sizable amounts of remittance returning to the region. Now, a 2020 study conducted by the United Nations Department of Economic and Social Affairs concluded that nearly one-fifth of the region's population lived outside their countries and territories of origin. The rate of outward migration places the Caribbean's needs among the countries with the highest global immigration rate, and that is work done by the IMO in 2020, the World Bank in 2016, and the OECD in 2012. The United States, Canada, and the United Kingdom remain the most common destinations for Caribbean labor migrants. Now, preliminary findings of an ongoing labor market assessment of CARICOM member states, which has been conducted by the ILO as part of the development of a broader regional migration policy, which was mandated by the heads of government of CARICOM, revealed that the Bahamas, Trinidad and Tobago, Antigua and Barbuda, and Barbados are the main net receivers of migrants from other Caribbean states, whereas Guyana, Haiti, and Jamaica are the main senders of migrants from other Caribbean or CARICOM member states. Further, of, for the all 15 CARICOM member states and net senders of migrants to the rest of the world, Haiti, Jamaica, Guyana, Trinidad and Tobago, and Suriname are the leading senders. Critically, the movements of CARICOM nationals, whether intra-regional or between the region and third states, are primarily driven by economic differences, with nationals from lower-income member states moving to higher-income states. The recent discovery of Oregon-Guyana is also expected to have implications for regional migration to and from the country. The skills regime in place in the CSME has not led to insignificant intra-regional movement of people in search of employment. The focus of the CARICOM heads of government at this time is moving towards achieving free movement of all CARICOM nationals. Chair, with respect to the labor characteristics of the CARICOM region, the ongoing ILO study reveals that around nine million people of working age, that is, ages 15 plus, are in the labor force in the region, corresponding to a labor force participation rate of about 64%. While the labor force has increased from about around 6 million in the year 2000, much of the growth has been driven by Haiti, which accounts for more than half of the working-age population in the region. Chair, there has been little change in the labor force participation rate in the region, but gender gaps have been narrowing, and youth participation is decreasing. These are both positive trends. Now, very importantly, not everyone is in employment, is in the job that can be considered decent work, with around three-quarters of the region's employment estimated to be in informal employment. The original average decreases to about 50% once Haiti is removed from the regional totals. Informal employment means that workers are often not eligible for social protection, as well as other benefits such as paid annual and sick leave. Services account for 86% of all employment of women in the Caribbean region, excluding Haiti. For men, that figure is around 70%. There is a higher propensity for men to be engaged in industry sectors such as construction and transport, although women are often engaged in manufacturing as well as agriculture. There are labor shortages in the agricultural sector in the region, but even more so in the services, health, and education sectors, particularly driven by migration of these workers out of the region. Chair, it is important to note that with respect to labor migration governance, there is no official regional dialogue process or coordination mechanism on migration or labor migration that all CARICOM member states participate in. Some CARICOM member states have national coordination mechanisms on migration and other coordinated committees where labor migration is discussed. With respect to the movement of labor within the CARICOM Single Market and Economy, once a CARICOM national is a holder of a skilled certificate in any of the 12 approved categories, he is free or she is free to move in search of employment in any member state. Chair, in terms of the impact of climate on migration, the CARICOM region is particularly exposed to climate-related shocks, given that climate-related disasters are set to increase with rising temperatures and shifting weather patterns. Chair, in terms of recommendations, taking on board talent retention. So given the issues identified earlier in terms of the key drivers of immigration for the region, talent retention strategies as a means of addressing the brain drain will involve some of the following. Expansion of decent work in the economies of CARICOM member states. Significantly reducing the level of informality in employment. Increasing investment by the private sector in the creation of output that requires more highly skilled persons. Using the provisions of the CSME in terms of facilitating the exercise of the right of establishment in a more efficient manner by simplifying and harmonizing the laws relating to the establishment of a commercial presence. Also, simplifying the movement of skilled community nationals within the community. Making use of existing trade agreements with third states to attract foreign direct investment in high-income earning sectors. And targeting investments in medical tourism and offshore universities, thereby creating high-skill jobs within the region. In terms of cooperation as a strategy for treating the brain drain, which we believe there should be deepening of economic ties with Latin and South America through cultural exchanges and emotion. This will assist in bridging the cultural and language divide and attract investment into the community to produce high-skilled jobs. Facilitate greater access via air and sea transportation to the Latin and South American countries to encourage direct investment in the region from these countries. Also, increase access to tertiary-level education and skills development for young people in the OECD countries of destination. Qualifies to improve labor productivity in the region and increase economic growth rates of CARICOM member state. And finally, OECD countries of destination should contribute to the training and development of highly skilled CARICOM nationals, thereby making it possible for those CARICOM nationals to serve the destination member states as well as the region that they are from. Thank you, Chair, for this opportunity to make a contribution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Priville, for sharing your valuable regional perspectives and for outlining practical policy recommendations within the Caribbean framework. Finally, I am pleased to introduce Mr. Jason Marzak, Vice President and Senior Director at the Adrian Ashed Latin American Center of the Atlantic Council. Mr. Marzak, thank you for taking time to participate in today's dialogue. You have the floor.
Good morning, and thank you very much for the invitation to participate in today's session on Strategic Action for Addressing the Brain Drain and this really important regular meeting of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development. I'd like to begin by formally thanking you, Chair, Ambassador Gilchrist, for convening today's really important discussion at the Atlantic Council and through our Caribbean initiative. We've been honored to work with you personally and also with your embassy. I'd also like to begin by recognizing and thanking Kim Osborne, Executive Secretary for Integral Development, for the invitation to participate in a topic that's critical for our hemisphere, and of course, thank all of your excellencies for being here and attendance. In my allotted time, I will look at some of the drivers of brain drain, how it affects development in the Caribbean, and policy solutions from government, business, and regional partners, and hopefully build on the presentations, the excellent participations that you heard from the other two speakers. As all of you know, brain drain has been a topic across the Americas for decades. Human capital is the bedrock for economic growth, and the loss of it can severely hinder countries' and businesses' ability to scale, to innovate, and also to tackle key challenges. Brain drain, of course, is felt across the hemisphere, but as you've heard thus far in today's presentations, and as you all know, it disproportionately affects the small island developing states that make up the Caribbean region. You've heard numbers, and I'm going to share a couple additional numbers to color my presentation. Since 2000, emigration from Caribbean countries has surged by 45%, with countries such as Grenada, Guyana, St. Vincent de Grenadines, Jamaica, Suriname, Barbados, Antigua and Barbuda seeing emigration rates upwards of 30%. And for Caribbean countries, the United States remains the top destination, with education opportunities, wage opportunities, particularly as you've heard in the healthcare sector, among others, and also citizen safety being among the many poll factors. For Jamaica, Belize, and the Bahamas, more than 70% of their immigration is to the United States, with every other Caribbean country except for Suriname and St. Vincent de Grenadines seeing these rates at upwards of 40%. So this means that when we think about solutions, when we think about stakeholders to engage, partnership with the United States is needed, and it's absolutely critical. Many Caribbean countries, as you all know, have small populations, which can lead to limited human capital, and this can affect all facets of Caribbean economies and development at the same time. For example, the simple act of Caribbean ministries welcoming investment proposals can be a daunting task. Limited staff means longer wait times for potential investors to receive feedback on bids for investment projects, and this also creates higher bids for investment projects, and this also creates higher risk and can also deter investors from seeing projects through the end of bid rounds. At the same time, a loss of talent can inhibit Caribbean governments and businesses from competing for grants from partners such as the United States, Canada, and the United Kingdom. The one-hundred-plus pages of proposals required to secure needed financial and technical assistance for infrastructure, digital, and energy projects disadvantages Caribbean governments and businesses that struggle with human capital and talent retention. At the Atlantic Council, we have worked with Caribbean governments and the World Bank to identify some of the drivers of brain drain, policy, and business solutions to address them, and how to convene the right stakeholders to ensure that the appropriate actions take place. Through a series of roundtables previously and discussions with the World Bank and Caribbean governments, we led to four main recommendations that either help to address brain drain or can also capitalize on some of the opportunities that come with talent leaving. This has helped to inform how we are supporting capacity building, how we look at that with local businesses and with civil society. So I'm going to go through those four recommendations. First, we highlight the importance of building skills partnerships, and you've heard about that in the other presentations as well. Skills partnerships between destination and source countries. This ensures that when people leave the Caribbean for the United States and other parts of the world, their skills, their expertise, and talents are housed and transferred back to the region in ways such as perhaps remote teaching or remote trainings. People will leave, but the question is, how do we ensure that those skills continue to be maximized, both in their new place of residence, but also back in the source country? In the U.S., those types of skills partnerships are not just limited and shouldn't just be thought about being limited to the federal level. There are skills partnerships at the state level, at the community level, and of course, with different types of institutions, from business to education institutions. Second, the talent retention is absolutely key, and you've heard about that through the presentations thus far, but talent retention is not always possible. And in that case, skills gaps across the Caribbean can be addressed through high-skilled workers and other parts of the region, perhaps coming to countries that are in need of skills. This can be a more concentrated effort from governments, from multilateral institutions, receiving countries, and non-public stakeholders to try to fill these skills gaps across the region, working with partners beyond the initial country. Third is a focus on circular migration. This entails enticing migrants to return to the Caribbean or to retain skilled workers through sufficient labour standards, competent pay, and job security to limit the drivers and consequences from brain drain. I think, going back to the presentation, brain drain cannot be looked at in isolation. It's tied to broader economic development and tied to broader economic opportunities. And so how do we unlock those opportunities and focus on what can be unlocked through circular migration? Governments can work with educational institutions in receiving countries to ensure that, as citizens leave the Caribbean, there is flexible mobility and opportunity that can be created to encourage them to return to the region. And finally, we have to look at the importance of diaspora communities. And collaboration with diaspora communities is integral to help with skills development, fostering entrepreneurship, and also improving trade alliances. How can diaspora partnerships help to improve opportunities at home, and how can those strong ties with diaspora be maximized even further is a pending question. Addressing the drivers and challenges with brain drain, as you heard throughout my presentation, will require partnerships. Whether you are a source or receiving country, each government and society is affected. I think working together to share resources and knowledge are opportunities to address the implications of brain drain, and that can start here in places like the Organization of American States. The OAS is the premier coordinating institution in the Americas, so I'd like to invite the OAS to partner with the Atlantic Council on this topic, particularly with our Caribbean Initiative, as we have done previously. By leveraging our collective expertise and convening power, we can use upcoming regional platforms to produce policy recommendations and outcomes to look at how to stem the flow of brain drain and also how to maximize some of the opportunities that do come with people leaving their countries. I'd like to thank the OAS and Madam Chair again for the invitation and look forward to questions from member states and the appropriate follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Marzak, for your thoughtful presentation and for highlighting the strategic role of multi-stakeholder engagement to address this issue. I now open the floor for an interactive dialogue between member states and/or panelists. Delegations are kindly asked to limit their questions or comments to three minutes. The floor is open. I recognize the Bahamas. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. The Bahamas is appreciative of your decision to convene today's CD meeting, which focuses on a longstanding and critical developmental challenge facing the developing countries within the Americas' brain drain. As outlined by our distinguished experts and colleague member states, over the past two generations, the Caribbean region has been the region most impacted by brain drain, particularly emigration of tertiary-educated individuals and professionals. Over time, neoliberal discourse has shifted the view of brain drain away from seeing it as largely a destructive legacy of colonialism and underdevelopment that has continued to facilitate developed countries' free riding off the investments or assets of developing countries to it being a resource allocation issue, i.e. the normal result of capital moving to where it can be best used and compensated in a globalized world. However, there are real-world developmental impacts from brain drain for small developing countries who continue to remain caught between the proverbial rock and a hard place. Like many OAS member states, an area where the Bahamas continues to face critical challenges is in the healthcare sector. Despite locally producing more than one hundred qualified nurses annually, the Bahamas has long faced a nurse shortage, as many seek better-paying opportunities in the United States and Canada. The developmental challenge posed for the Bahamas is compounded by the fact that Bahamian nurses are trained by the government, free of charge, and the Bahamas has a system called bonding that require nurses to work in the Bahamas for a specified period of time, given the public investment made in the education and training of local nurses. What we are finding, however, is that healthcare systems in countries like the U.S. are offering salaries inclusive of signing bonuses that are designed to allow nurses to buy out their bond so they can emigrate to the United States, which has led to a chronic nurse shortage in the country, particularly specialized nurses. In order to address the critical shortfall, the government has to recruit nurses from abroad, including from within the region, while many continuing to train nurses in the University of the Bahamas. This is one of the many examples of the practical developmental challenges that modern-day brain drain poses for small states like the Bahamas. Given the complex nature of the factors contributing to brain drain, including the realities of geography, colonial ties, limitations small countries face with respect to economic scale, and global socio-economic relations among countries, solutions to the brain drain will need to be similarly complex, account for the historical relationships of dependency and underdevelopment fostered by colonialism over time with a longer-term horizon to address both push-and-pull factors and fostered co-development. While the Bahamas and countries like ours are working on mechanisms to diminish push factors and to better leverage diaspora while they are abroad, we also encourage developed countries to consider ways they can reinvest in countries losing talent to, at the least help countries like the Bahamas offset the lost investments in professional immigrants. Enhancing support for the human development and capacity-building programs offered through the OAS can be one way to facilitate such reinvestment into the developing countries of the region. The Bahamas looks forward to the sharing of experiences and solutions to the pernicious issue of brain drain during the CD session and to building on today's discussions to foster concrete partnerships to address the persistent developmental challenge for most of the countries of the Americas. Thank you, Chair.
I thank the Bahamas. I thank the Bahamas, but I'd like to remind delegations that this is the interactive dialogue session during which we receive questions for the panelists' response. Chile, I recognize you for posing your question, please. Thank you.
Gracias, presidenta. Sí, dos preguntas. En la exposición del economista del Banco Mundial, me pareció leer que esta fuga se daba más entre las mujeres que entre los hombres. Me gustaría pedirle si puede elaborar un poco las causas que visualiza de eso y también los efectos sociales que trae. Y en general, nos queda la impresión que esta herramienta de los Global Skills Partnership pareciera ser herramienta desde los países desarrollados hacia los países en desarrollo. ¿Qué iniciativas podrían desarrollarse entre los países en desarrollo, entre América Latina y el Caribe, que nos puedan ayudar a enfrentar este desafío? Muchas gracias, presidenta.
Thank you very much, Chile. I now offer the floor to the panelists to respond to that question, those questions. World Bank, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So, I'm going to address the question by Chile, if that is okay, because I think on Bahamas was more general consideration, and so I'm going to address you. Bueno, entonces paso español para contestar a la autoridad de Chile y bueno, también para decir que parte de mi corazón también en Chile, porque empecé mi carrera en Chile trabajando en la academia y también en el sector público. Así que, y creo que bueno, Chile ofrece, como usted sabe bien, muchas potenciales soluciones, ¿no?, al problema de la, digamos, de la migración de cerebro. Lo que ha desarrollado Chile con Beca Chile, digamos, a lo largo del año, de los años, ha sido, digamos, un ejemplo muy valioso en donde básicamente se permitía, digamos, a estudiantes de ir a graduarse como posgrado al extranjero y después como vinculado a volver al país de origen. Yo tengo muchos ex alumnos, digamos, que fueron a doctorar al extranjero y ahora son profesores, digamos, en Chile, trabajan para el sector público entonces. Y esto pero fue, creo que fue un programa exitoso, no solo para la, digamos, para lo con educación más alta, ¿no?, pero también porque también había un programa para magister, digamos, más técnico, ¿no? Entonces, seguramente un caso que merece la pena mirar también porque este programa, si no equivoco, fue financiado con la ganancia del cobre, ¿no? Entonces, cómo ocupar, digamos, para, digamos, también para ir países de la región como Guyana, que, por ejemplo, o que van a tener como alguna ganancia en términos de recursos naturales, digamos, cómo ocupar esta ganancia de manera smart, digamos, para poder financiar esto es que va de retorno. Volviendo en particular a su pregunta, la composición de género es más algo que estamos observando en el Caribe, digamos, sobre todo en año reciente, también por un tema de composición. O sea, como comentaban los panelistas anteriores, observamos gran parte de la migración está concentrada en el sector de salud, ¿no?, de cuidado. Entonces, un sector donde típicamente está dominado por mujeres. Entonces, es más una consecuencia de este aspecto. Y con respecto a lo que mencionaba, lo que pueden hacer los países de la región entre sí, yo estoy de acuerdo. Yo creo que un paso siguiente es no solo tratar de ver esto acuerdo de Global Skill Partnership entre países de alto ingreso y, no sé, en Europa o en Norteamérica, también entre países de la región. O sea, yo creo que hay un potencial que se puede desarrollar dentro de América Latina, digamos, para implementar este programa, y seguramente países como Chile, como Brasil pueden ser países receptores, digamos, porque son países que también están envejeciendo rápidamente, ¿no? Entonces, van a tener rápidamente las necesidades de los países de alto ingreso. Digamos, Argentina, por ejemplo, que es un país que tiene una política migratoria en general muy favorable, digamos. Son seguramente países que se pueden transformar en países receptores, digamos, y creo que la inversión clave es en el tema de reconocimiento de la calificación. O sea, yo creo que, por ejemplo, los países del área CARICOM, del Caribe, están en la dirección correcta. O sea, están implementando un poco esta área de, digamos, libera circulación de los trabajadores y de reconocimiento de los títulos y de las calificaciones. Pero, o sea, mucho de esto todavía es en el área de jure, digamos, ¿no?, a nivel de acuerdos, y desde el punto de vista de facto, digamos, la movilidad no es todavía tan aprovechada porque hay mucho costo, digamos, coste de fricción de movilidad interna, y también hay tema efectivo de reconocimiento de títulos, digamos, que persisten. Entonces, creo que también estos foros son importantes para empujar un poco el tema de reconocimiento de calificaciones de los títulos, facilitar estos aspectos y hacerlo más ágiles, digamos, y esto puede facilitar la movilidad adentro de la región. Seguramente también con el cambio de política migratoria en Europa, en Norteamérica, van a haber más oportunidades para desarrollar flujo migratorio adentro de la región, que ya hemos visto, digamos, que muchos países se pueden transformar como países receptores, como ha mostrado, digamos, Colombia, Ecuador, también con la emergencia de Venezuela. Esto como espero que haya contestado su pregunta. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Makovic. I now offer the floor to Mr. Marzak to respond to some of the propositions in the presentation by the Bahamas. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll address the question from the Bahamas and then Chile. I think representative from the Bahamas made an excellent point on the particular impacts on the healthcare sector that the Bahamas faces and other countries face as well. And I think that what that comment also lends me to share is the fact that when we look at partnerships, it's very difficult to have partnerships across all different types of sectors, and it's absolutely fundamental to, as what's been heard about throughout these presentations, is working with host countries, working with receiving countries, but sectoral-based partnerships. And so thinking like specifically within the healthcare sector, what are specific partnerships that allow for perhaps greater circular migration or specific skills partnerships between the destination and source countries? And what I want to put out there before all of you present is the fact that the migrants who are leaving the brain drain affects a number of different sectors. The solution for each sector is going to be a little bit different. And so looking at a sectoral-by-sectoral solution will help to address some of the different drivers of the brain drain.
Y solamente un comentario para el representante de Chile, ¿no?, que como mi colega del Banco Mundial compartió, los flujos de inmigración está cambiando todos los días, está cambiando en una manera acelerada. Yo pienso en esos días. Y Chile ahora es un país cual ha sido un destino aún más importante de migrantes. Y esto refleja el hecho que hay nuevos destinos de países en todas las Américas. Y esto, aunque los Estados Unidos ha sido un gran destino especialmente de migrantes del Caribe por muchos años, imagino que estos números y estos destinos van a estar cambiando. Y sería aún más importante pensar entre los países cómo puede aprovechar de los migrantes quienes están llegando. Y al mismo tiempo pensar otra vez sobre el tema de migración circular, ¿no?, y qué puede hacer para que haya oportunidades, para que la gente se vive ahí y contribuya a la economía lícita y al mismo tiempo tiene la oportunidad para regresar a su país. Y eso tiene que ver otra vez que con más oportunidades para la reconoción de las habilidades de los migrantes para que puede contribuir más tan pronto como posible a sus nuevos destinos.
Thank you, Mr. Marzak. I now offer the floor to Mr. Privil. Mr. Privil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, just to state that within the Caribbean and especially in the CARICOM member states, the matter of recognition of skills and recognition of degrees, this is not an issue that is hindering movement of persons, because we have a CARICOM examinations council, we have University of West Indies. Our training, our TIVET policies, they allow for easy movement of people. That's not the issue that is hindering movement within the Caribbean region. More importantly, it's important to know that the migration of skilled CARICOM nationals to the OECD countries, mainly Canada, United States and the United Kingdom, is not only driven by CARICOM nationals in and of themselves seeking employment. This OECD countries are actively engaged in coming to the region and offering packages of employment. And you can well understand the challenge that the member states of CARICOM would face. Most of those high-skilled persons in the medical sector, for instance, they work for governments and therefore it would be difficult for the governments of those member states of CARICOM to match the packages that are being offered to the skilled professionals in the health sector in particular. So there is a proactive approach by the OECD to recruiting those persons. Therefore, if we are to treat with the brain drain in a practical manner, it would require, as was indicated by Bahamas and also in the presentation by the World Bank representative, for some form of partnership at the level of the training of our, of the high-skilled workers who are in demand, a level of training that seeks to shed the burden of that training. One. Two, we could possibly look at the fact that we're looking at medical, the healthcare sector, perhaps cooperation in that sector where medical institutions that are providing the service in the developed world in the OECD could have establishments established within the region, which would then address two factors. It would lend to the tourism-based structure of the economies in terms of income generation and everything else, and also retaining the skilled nationals within the region for the supply and availability to the domestic population as well as to those offshore medical facilities that would be resident within the region. So we believe there is room for cooperation at the sectoral level, but at the national level, the government level, there needs to be an active program of support, the provision of scholarships for training of our own people in the region so that both sides are able to benefit from this high-skilled labor, which is obviously in demand. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Preville. Now, this is the way in which we will proceed. I will take the questions from Costa Rica and Grenada, and I will then ask the panelists to respond. Following their responses, I will take the questions from Guatemala and Saint Kitts and Neves and request that the panelists respond. Thank you very much. I now offer the floor to Costa Rica.
Muchas gracias, señora Presidenta. Buenos días a todos. Muchas gracias a los panelistas también que nos acompañan en sala. Mi pregunta está relacionada, el señor Jason, que nos acompaña hoy en su presentación hablaba del papel de la diáspora. Mi pregunta está relacionada en que a todos los estados miembros nos interesa promocionar el tema de las becas, becas en el exterior, en particular Estados Unidos, Europa. ¿Cómo relacionar, cómo hacer un puente para que además esas personas que se forman en el extranjero puedan regresar a sus países con los incentivos, las políticas públicas, las herramientas para poder ejercer en nuestros países? Retribuir al país, contribuir con el desarrollo nacional y a la vez también cómo vincularlos con la diáspora? Tal vez si hay algún buen ejemplo que nos pueda ayudar en los estudios del Banco Mundial, qué experiencia tiene buena práctica el CARICOM y por supuesto elaborar un poquito más en esa presentación de don Jason. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Costa Rica, and now offer the floor to Grenada.
Thank you, Chair, and thank the panelists for your very informative contributions. My questions. So I want to relate the panelist's contribution, speaking to the aging populations and the decrease in the number of workforce persons of younger age qualified. And that was related to the flow, brain drain out from developing into OECD. So the question is, how do we relate the partnership that you speak about, not just the training, but the other infrastructure that would facilitate ease of the circular migration that you referred to? This question is really challenging whether or not we should be having solutions to bridge the gap, only focus on training, or should there not be solutions focused more multifacetically on the reasons why the brain drain do not end up giving us the reverse? Concrete example, the aging population will not return to the developing countries if the health infrastructure is not adequate. Example. And the other question is just related to the OAS. So in the context of this persistent brain drain that we're speaking about in the health sector across the Americas, how can the OAS member states, particularly those of us who are small and vulnerable with our health systems, how can we leverage the same circular migration as a tool to strengthen the national health infrastructure in our countries? And what role can the inter-American cooperation play in facilitating this return and reintegration of health professionals to the panelists? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Grenada. The floor is now open for the responses from the panelists. Shall we begin with Mr. Makovic, please?
Thank you, and I'll start addressing the questions by Costa Rica. Yeah, okay. Ya muchas gracias por su pregunta. Yo creo que hay bastante lecciones, digamos, de lo que puede facilitar el retorno de la diáspora o, digamos, el engagement con la diáspora para facilitar un efectivo retorno, una efectiva migración circular. Y al menos he trabajado también bastante la región de Europa y hacia central, digamos, y en particular en el corto plazo, de verdad herramientas que funcionan son incentivos fiscales. O sea, España ha introducido, creo, a partir de, no sé, hace diez, quince años, ha introducido una serie de reformas que, por un lado, facilitaban, digamos, el proceso de integración laboral de los migrantes, pero al mismo tiempo mejoraban la condición para los retornados, la condición fiscal entonces. Y estos son países, y lo mismo pasó en Italia, estos son países que tienen sueldo relativamente bajo, entonces es difícil traer de vuelta profesionales en extranjeros. Entonces, un poco lo que pasa en América Latina, en el Caribe, digamos, o sea, la brecha no son tan alta pero igual brechas importantes. Pero al momento de introducir incentivos fiscales, esa brecha se puede reducir. Y, digamos, en España y en Italia esto programa han sido bastante exitosos. Y al mismo, y esto, digamos, tiene que ser parte como un paquete, ¿no?, de reforma. También incentivos fiscales pero al mismo tiempo mejorar las condiciones, por ejemplo, de empezar actividades. Sabemos que en general los retornados tienen, digamos, los retornados voluntarios, los retornados económicos, llamamos, tienen a ser mejor, tienen que tener, tienen a tener mejor desempeño en el, cuando vuelven al país de origen porque ya ha acumulado experiencia, ahorro. Entonces, por ejemplo, tienen más capacidad emprendedora de empezar una actividad. Entonces, tener oportunidades abiertas y para incentivar también la creación de empresas, de esto también como es importante, creo. Y bueno, puedo decir más temas, digamos, relacionados a Global Skill Partnership en la respuesta a Grenada. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Makovic. I now offer the floor to Mr. Marzak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yo voy a empezar y responder a la pregunta del representante de Costa Rica sobre cómo podemos mejor trabajar con la población de la diáspora. Yo quiero poner, cuando pienso sobre la propensidad de empezar un negocio aquí en los Estados Unidos, los migrantes son más dispuestos, hay un porcentaje aún más grande de empezar un negocio aquí en vez de las personas no migrantes. Si recuerdo bien, es más o menos como doble los migrantes que empiezan un negocio. Y generalmente muchas veces cuando hay negocios, hay oportunidades para que la diáspora empieza un negocio vinculado en algún respeto con su país de origen, ¿no? Se puede, un negocio para importación de un producto o lo que sea, ¿no? Entonces, yo pienso que este tipo de negocio de la población diáspora, no son todos los negocios de la población pero son algunos, esto presenta una oportunidad para mantener los vínculos con su país de origen y al mismo tiempo ayudar con la formulación de más empleados en el país de origen. Entonces, yo pienso que hay aún más oportunidades para aprovechar y para hacer un análisis aún más extensivo del tipo de negocios que la diáspora está empezando aquí en los Estados Unidos y cómo puede aún mejor tener este vínculo con su país de origen. Este, como el comercio, yo pienso como es un tema y es una oportunidad muy única para asegurar que esta migración o para ayudar a fortalecer que hay esta migración cuales aún más circulo en su manera de trabajar.
With respect to the question from Grenada on inter-American cooperation, I go back to my presentation and the importance of institutions like the Organization of American States, the importance of this particular meeting. You know, as we look at the increasingly changing dynamics of migration across the hemisphere, it will be fundamental to see how we can work more collaboratively across member states, given the fact that, as I shared before, you know, the US has been traditionally, you know, a top destination for migrants from the Caribbean, but those migration numbers, those migration flows are changing. And so getting ahead of the curve, what's happened historically is that we're trying to address a challenge, a problem that's been occurring for quite some time, but as we start to look at the changing flows of migratory trends across the hemisphere, how do we get ahead of those flows to come up with solutions specifically with regard to integration of migrants and their new countries? And I go back to the importance of recognition of skills partnerships. We talked about how that's already being done in the Caribbean, but there are huge opportunities across the region writ large to recognize the skills that migrants bring, and that helps to bring migrants into the listed economy and that thereby then also helps to generate greater circular migratory flows back with the country of original, the source country initially. So I think that this is a critical moment when we see the changing nature of migration, of migration policy across the region, to be able to ensure that this next generation of migrants, the next generation of countries in which migrants will be going to, that the skills that they bring are incorporated into the listed economy and that the processes to be able to do so are as easy as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marzak. I now offer the floor to Mr. Preville.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I think the points made earlier are very solid points in terms of the contribution into options for migrants. It's also clear is that, based on the information shown this morning, that the OECD population is aging. And if that is the case, then the demand for highly skilled nationals in the health sector in OECD countries will not decrease, it will continue to increase. So what are the options? As I've indicated earlier, one option would be for the provision of that highly skilled service to be done within the region as opposed to the skilled nationals leaving the region and providing it elsewhere. If we had cooperation and have cooperation to have those medical facilities established in the region, in member states in the region, where we already have free movement of the skill set in the region. So we're looking at perhaps creating within the region areas of excellence where investments from the OECD could be made within the region, where those health demands could be provided for from within the region. That is one of the approaches that could ensure that our people remain in the region while still meeting the needs that obviously exist in the OECD for the highly, the skills and talent. Also, I think the presentation made earlier also highlights the critical need, critical element of trade and trade policy. Surely, if we have migrants from the region who have moved to OECD countries and have the incentive to invest in areas or businesses that are linked back to production and supplies from the region of goods, of services, then that would therefore mean there would be no need for further migration of nationals from the region to OECD countries if they are able to generate highly paid jobs in the region and those jobs are providing goods and services of demand in the diáspora, in the OECD countries facilitated by our diáspora community overseas. So investments by OECD investors within the region to support domestic production, which will be facilitated by diáspora overseas, is another means of addressing the creation of employment within the region without necessarily losing the skill set to the rest of the world. So I think these are some of the areas we can begin to look at. The trade area, the reinvestment area, especially in the health sector, are possibilities that can be explored.
I thank you very much, Mr. Preville, for your intervention, your response. I am pleased to offer the floor again to Mr. Makovic so that he can respond to Grenada's questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks again to the representative of Grenada for the comments. I think it's a very important point, kind of addressing this issue in a kind of multi-dimensional way, and it requires, it's a complex issue, right, brain drain, and it requires multisectorial coordination, multisectorial actions, and again, a multi-dimensional mindset to find solutions, as you are pointing out. Also, the idea is that you don't want to invest in training for in training for future generations in order for them to leave again, right, and so that you actually reinforce brain drain, right? But coming to your point of what countries can do now, basically, I think one way of looking at that is like try to focus on, you know, the short run versus the long run, right? In the long run, strengthening skill systems, TIVAT, education providing institutions, these will reinforce the human capital at origin and will enable countries to match the local demand and the global demand. At the same time, these investments will have effect in the long run, like in 10, 15 years, right? And for instance, this is the case in countries like Eastern Europe, like Romania, Hungary with the EU enlargement. Basically, you observe like a high outflows of medical doctors, for instance, but at the same time, the enrollment in the medical professions increased in those countries, right? So that you will see like an increased supply also for the local demand in the coming years. But what countries can do, like in the relatively short run, to address the flow? So one is what I was mentioning before in terms of incentives, right? There's something that can be implemented to already to kind of attract back kind of human capital. Others are interventions in the labor market, like for instance, improving all the conditions, especially for entry into formal jobs of the new generations, but also improving existing conditions like for the workforce who is more subject to brain drain. For instance, I was in a seminar in Jamaica in April, and it was very interesting to hear from the Jamaican authorities all the problems that, let's say, people, especially women in the healthcare sector, face. The problems of excessive working hours, overloads, and like very, very tiring and demanding time shifts. So of course, improving this condition and also like and also wages that do not offer like a very, let's say, promising growth that are kind of staggered. So improving the conditions at home, like through these interventions in the labor market at home, improving flexibility in the labor market, improving the doing business at home, are all elements that can help, you know, at the margin, improving the conditions also for retirees in the future, right? Because without improving, of course, conditions at home, kind of it will be difficult to create this virtuous circle of circular migration. And then there is an important point of internal coordination. So this cannot be solved by one agency only. I mean, it's not just Minister of Education or Minister of Labor or Minister of Foreign Affairs, right? This requires high level of coordination among agencies in the origin countries, right? And also to achieve, you know, as was pointed out correctly before, you know, the division of investing in some areas of excellence, right, that I think makes total sense for the Caribbean region, and it could given also the comparative advantage of the English language. It could be, you know, the IT sector, for instance, or everything that relates to digital and technology in addition of health, of course, or it could be tourism, or it could be even, you know, the training professionals in the area of climate shock response, given the high exposure of the region to climate shocks, right? So this, thinking about all this specialization and coordination requires really a vision. And also, I think this is kind of coming to also another point mentioned previously, this is like an important role, of course, for like this and like the Atlantic Council, but also for international organization and multinational organization, right? Because they can help, for instance, through lending operation in reinforcing institutions and systems at origin, and they also convene, they can help convene, let's say, donors and partners from destination countries, like for instance, like what we are doing now, you know, between Spain and Latin American countries in the example I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makovic. I now offer the floor to Secretary Osborne so that she can respond to the propositions by Grenada. Secretary Osborne, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, distinguished delegates. I just wanted to touch on a few things that was mentioned by the ambassador from Grenada, and how can we and what we can offer as the OAS. I believe first cooperation and partnerships, and we are trying to facilitate cooperation and the sharing of knowledge between and among our countries. And I will just highlight a few things, a few initiatives that are underway that can speak to how the diaspora in particular can give back or how we can ensure that the knowledge that we are losing can return to our countries. One of the programs that was offered last year, in fact, was the ECHO program, cooperation from Uruguay, and that is specific to the health sector. And what that allows us to do is, the model originates from New Mexico and has been replicated in some of the South American countries. Uruguay has offered it as a cooperation model that can be replicated in our countries, where health experts from the diaspora, from other countries can lend their skills and their expertise to medical challenges that may be faced in our countries. That opportunity is still open. It's a mechanism that needs to be organized on the ground with the health sector in our countries to receive expertise. And one of the very good examples that Uruguay gave is where one patient in Uruguay was facing a diagnosis that could not be handled in country, and through cooperation and partnerships with MD Anderson in Houston and a few others, they were able to diagnose that problem remotely. And so it doesn't require people to move back, but with telehealth being what it is, there are opportunities to capitalize on those expertise that are outside of our countries. The important thing is for us to structure to receive that cooperation, and that's something that we are actively facilitating between and among our member states. I believe five CARICOM countries had raised their hands to begin replicating the ECHO model in their countries. Another area that we're trying to, that we're building now is Coopronet, the cooperation marketplace that has been established for exactly that purpose, the idea of sharing knowledge and experiences and expertise. And I refer specifically to the Ask an Expert section on Coopronet. And what are we doing there? Again, what we are doing is enlisting expertise from across the hemisphere to help our countries with the development challenges that they may face. And so we want to encourage our diaspora as well to register on Coopronet, the Ask an Expert section. We validate expertise, so you have to give us references that we can then validate, but you are registered there and member states would have access to those experts on an ongoing basis. And again, we're not necessarily saying that everything is free, but should there be a requirement for that or request for those expertise that they're available, whether it be on a voluntary basis or through consultancies as well. And last week, we launched the OAS Scholarship Alumni Program. The OAS has been giving scholarships for over 60 years. And last week, what we've done is we launched that program to get our alumni to give back, give back to our countries. We have been doing our latest numbers or recent numbers, between 2,000 and 4,000 scholarships a year. So imagine the number of experts that we have among the OAS Scholarship Alumni, and they can also give back. And that is our way, again, of ensuring that even if you are not able to return to your country having received an OAS scholarship, you have an opportunity to mentor, you have an opportunity to share your skills, to share your expertise through the Ask an Expert section of Coopronet. And as far as the diaspora, we've been actively pursuing diaspora relationships within our MSME program. What we want there is to facilitate entrepreneurship, to facilitate the sharing of business skills, business development skills, given the fact that the MSME sector is the largest sector for all of the countries of the region. How do we use diaspora skills and how do we connect with the diaspora importantly, if only for nostalgic goods, to get our diaspora to buy that which our countries are producing, to continue to spur economic development within the countries as well? So if they have young entrepreneurs who have new markets, particularly within the diaspora, then there's less a chance of them leaving their countries because they have economic activity that is rewarding for them. And finally, I believe what we are doing today, and I've taken notes in terms of cooperation, I really do believe that we need to continue this discussion on how we can better cooperate with some of the source countries. So that, we mentioned two of them, two of the biggest countries that we mentioned today, Canada and the US, are member states of the OAS. So the question is, how do we better work with our member states, and some of them are observer member states of the OAS? So that dialogue needs to continue, that discussion on how best to partner, so we create win-win opportunities for both, I think is something that the OAS can play a critical role in facilitating. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretary Osborne. I'm now pleased to offer the floor to Guatemala and to St. Kitts and Neves for posing their questions. Intern, Guatemala, please.
Muchas gracias, presidenta, y muchas gracias a nuestros panelistas. Estas presentaciones son realmente muy constructivas y enriquecedoras sobre este tema. Creo que coincidimos en que la retención del talento humano depende en gran medida de la existencia de oportunidades laborales que estén alineadas con tanto las capacidades y las aspiraciones de la juventud. Y, sin embargo, yo diría la mayoría de países de nuestra región existen brechas importantes entre los sistemas educativos, las necesidades reales del mercado, y las necesidades de la industria que estamos tratando de atraer para fomentar un desarrollo sostenible. Y en ese contexto, la pregunta para todos los panelistas, ¿qué experiencias concretas han observado en la región que puedan servir como caso de estudio en materia de alianzas público-privadas que hayan logrado vincular la formación técnica y universitaria con la demanda del mercado laboral y la inversión para prevenir esa fuga de cerebros? Y la segunda pregunta, un poco más breve, que creo que ya fue atendida a profundidad por la Secretaria Osborne, ¿cómo podría la vea posicionarse mejor para fomentar este tipo de iniciativas y alianzas? Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Guatemala. St. Kitts and Neves, please.
Thank you, Chair, and learned panelists. You have indeed deepened this discussion. We all know the problem, and we allocate resources to train our people, then they leave or do not return, not because they necessarily don't have any desire of doing so, but because we lack the capacity, from an employment point of view, to absorb them or competitively compensate them for the skills so developed. In St. Kitts and Neves, we are concerned about our small population. So this is an open question to the entire panel, and I must say that Dr. Osborne has addressed it to a certain extent in her intervention just now. But I wanted to know, to what extent do you believe that brain drain might be more of a development issue than a migratory one? And if this is so, how do we address that within our region when we all face the same problems? And again, thank you, Dr. Osborne, for beginning that discussion from my perspective.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I now offer the floor to the panelists for their response. Mr. Makovic, we'll begin with you, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. I'll start with Guatemala. Bueno, gracias por su pregunta. Yo creo que, digamos, en la región, lo que hemos observado es una historia bastante larga de acuerdo bilaterales, ¿no? Hay una tradición muy fuerte de acuerdo bilaterales con distintos países de destino, Estados Unidos, Canadá, Europa. Pero estos acuerdos bilaterales han privilegiado típicamente el sector agrícola, digamos, se han concentrado en la migración estacional, ¿no? Entonces, yo creo que falta bastante desarrollar y creo que hay mucho potencial por esto, todo este aspecto de, antes que todo, abrir el tema de la migración bilateral a, digamos, otras ocupaciones, ¿no?, y ocupaciones que son, como decía antes, en alta demanda tanto en el mercado local cuanto en el mercado extranjero, digamos, ¿no? Entonces, más allá del sector agrícola. Y obviamente, la demanda del sector agrícola es una fuerte demanda que va a quedar, digamos, pero es importante mirar esto desde una perspectiva de desarrollo, es decir, cuáles son, digamos, las habilidades en las cuales los países quieren invertir, ¿no?, a mediano-largo plazo, y cómo puedo desarrollar el programa de migración circular que me permitan, digamos, la formación de capital humano y al mismo tiempo el retorno de los cerebros. Entonces, y se están viendo semillas, digamos, o sea, otras regiones han sido más a la frontera, un poco como mencionaba en la presentación, Filipina, en Asia, Corea, con migración seleccionada de otros países como Indonesia, Japón, digamos, han sido bastante a la frontera para fortalecer la migración, por ejemplo, del sector odequidado, el sector manufacturero, digamos, el sector que era clave para la economía. Entonces, yo creo que lo que se está viendo es algunos programas que pero quedan todavía a escala bastante chica. O sea, nuestra actividad, digamos, que he mencionado, hemos hecho una evaluación, por ejemplo, del programa entre Colombia y Alemania, el programa TIM, en donde, digamos, no es exactamente un Global Skill Partnership, pero es un acuerdo bilateral con una fuerte componente de formación, digamos, sobre todo en parte en origen y parte en destino, digamos, también como formación de idioma alemana, pero sobre todo para enfocar al sector salud, digamos, enfermeras y salud. También Colombia, con acuerdo recién con España, digamos, está tratando de salir un poco del, digamos, hay todo, España tiene esos acuerdos con países de Latinoamérica bajo el programa ECHO, que se foca, obviamente, en agricultura, pero se están apareciendo nueva forma de acuerdo bilaterales, como por ejemplo con figuras como socorristas, digamos. Pero son acuerdos todavía bastante chicos, y, digamos, en nuestro reporte que va a salir, digamos, al final del año, vamos a dar una pequeña evaluación de lo que ha sido este programa entre Colombia y España, digamos, en particular. Ecuador también se está un poco ampliando, también tiene una tradición de acuerdo bilaterales principalmente en el sector agrícola, pero ahora está discutiendo con España, digamos, ya desde, digamos, los últimos años, ampliado su acuerdo de migración bilateral a socorristas, y está pensando de ampliar al sector construcción y transporte, digamos. Entonces, es un poco un desafío para los países de origen porque tienen también coste bastante alto en términos de capacitación, y por esto, digamos, los programas se quedan en escala chica, pero por eso es importante hacer un análisis riguroso de lo que es la demanda en el país de origen e involucrar muy bien al sector privado en el país de origen para tratar de, digamos, validar el hecho que una formación en esos sectores clave, digamos, también pueda garantizar una ocupación en el país de origen a futuro para personas que vienen de una trayectoria de migración circular. Y obviamente, es importante el diálogo con el sector privado en el país de destino, digamos, a los países de destino, para que puedan cofinanciar este programa de migración circular. Pero yo creo que una respuesta general a su punto es importante ir más allá de lo que son los acuerdos tradicionales, digamos, de acuerdo bilaterales tradicionales, donde no necesariamente hay una componente de capacitación, ¿no? Y entonces esto, digamos, impide que haya una componente de desarrollo del capital humano en origen que es clave, digamos, para desarrollar estas habilidades para las ocupaciones de alta demanda. demanda. If I should answer also to the question from Saint Kitts and Nevis. Okay, okay, so answering that quickly. I think I tend to agree with you. I mean, brain drain is a development issue broadly. It's not just, you know, kind of a secondary outcome of migration phenomenon. I'm saying so because you can observe brain drain even within a country. I mean, I come from Italy, and there are huge gaps between the northern region and the southern regions. And you see massive immigration, of course, of Italians, who have a huge diaspora abroad. I think in the last 10 years, we lost around 140,000 tertiary education graduates all over the world. But there is a huge diaspora within Italy, right, between the south, which is much less developed, and the north, right? So, in general, you really can address brain drain through a development lens, right? And to address that from a development perspective, you need to address the structural factors that determine brain drain. For instance, in Italy, one example is also crime and criminality at origin, right? That these, you know, create difficulties for starting own business for, like, younger populations. So people need to move in the north or move abroad, right, to start their own business? Or, like everything which is related to the business environment, right? So addressing these structural factors, including the supply of skills and the quality of skills that the country is producing, is key, right, to address the brain drain phenomenon in the long run. And then, of course, you can introduce migration policies and migration response that help, you know, address partially these issues, like global skill partnership or incentives to facilitate return and mobilizing the diaspora. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Makovic. Panelists, delegates, please allow me to make a slight adjustment to the order which I previously asked you to agree to. I'm going to offer the floor to Dominica, and then I'll ask Mr. Marzac and Mr. Preville to respond, and also Mr. Makovic, in that order. Thank you very much. Dominica, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I think what you did is best because my issue and question is related to the point raised by my friend from Saint Kitts and Nevis, and partially addressed by Executive Secretary. I want to thank the panelists, and I also want to thank the CD team for this very timely and relevant issue. I'm a product of the public service system from more than three, four decades, and it seems to be a traditional practice to compartmentalize issues of importance to small, vulnerable states. We give them high recognition, we give high recognition to the negative national economic impact of brain drain on small island states, in organizations and for where direct economic support can be least addressed, than to treat with this matter in organizations and instances where financial support and better conditions on borrowing are actively addressed. For me, the elephant in the room still remains: the collateral drain on the finances of governments of small states, the absence of measures to address the millions already spent and continue to be spent by governments of the region to train and train with scarce resources that are diverted from other critical social programs. Caricom heads continue to lament the need for better and cheaper financing even today. What, therefore, in your opinion, can be done? That's addressed mainly to World Bank, but I would like the views of the other panelists. What in your opinion can be done to have these brain drain issues addressed more holistically by making them more fundamental conditions for the receipt of direct economic development support and better conditions for borrowing? Thanks.
Thank you, Dominica. I now offer the floor to Mr. Marzac. Mr. Marzac, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And rather than addressing each question separately, I'll address them together because I think the questions are very much interrelated, as a representative from Dominica noted with regard to the question from Saint Kitts and Nevis, as well as even the question from Guatemala on public-private partnerships and how to better tie together education and industry together. I think, I also agree with the representative of Saint Kitts and Nevis on the fact that when I look at brain drain, it is very much an economic issue. There is, migration is push and pull factors, right? And so there are, of course, pull factors with higher wages, we talked about that previously, and the healthcare sector, as noted from Barbados. But there are also push factors, and some of the push factors are how to provide greater economic opportunities within country, and that went back to my original presentation on the challenges, especially as more people leave, the ability to compete for that higher talent and also for economic growth. I think some of the, when we look at concrete solutions, one solution that comes to mind as a potential model for other countries is the partnership the Dominican Republic signed with Purdue University. And what that partnership is was a reflection of the fact, and going back to your question from Representative Saint Kitts and Nevis, it was about finding a strategic area in which the Dominican Republic wants to grow its own industry, in this case, microchip and semiconductors, and looking at the expertise that Purdue University offers to be able to help the country to build that sector out even further with the idea that that will help with talent retention within the country. And obviously, that's a sector that has higher-paying wages as well, thereby going to the fact that it minimizes some of the divide between origin country and recipient country, and that wage gap that we talked about previously with regard to the healthcare sector. And so when I look at kind of opportunities insofar as how to minimize the brain drain, one of those opportunities is about looking at strategic industries that will potentially have higher wages and finding those partnerships with the education sector, whether it's local education institutions or international education institutions, including those like Purdue University here in the United States. And I think even at a national level, some of the opportunities, some of the best examples I've seen is greater, ensuring that universities are more plugged into what are the demands from industry. And oftentimes, there's a divide between what universities are focusing on and what industry is seeking in regard to the types of jobs of today, but I think even more important when we look at the jobs of tomorrow, right? Because the labor force is changing dramatically, and my concern is that brain drain could even be accelerated further if there isn't the requisite actions taken to make sure that our populations in our hemisphere are prepared for the jobs of tomorrow. And so some of those, I think, internship opportunities and the connection really between local business and local universities is critical, as well as, on the broader sense, public-private partnerships for economic development writ large. And because of the fact that brain drain is also, it's a migration issue, but it is very much, as you say, an economic development issue, how to further ease the public-private partnerships, reduce the bureaucratic processes, reduce the wait time to be able to move projects forward? Because as those projects advance, there's greater economic opportunities locally, and that can help to provide stymie the desire, the incentive to leave. But I'll end just going back to the importance of those partnerships with universities. And also, you know, US universities or universities from other parts of the world, there's also, doesn't necessarily require having to travel to the United States, there's online education classes and others that can be facilitated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marzac, for your responses. I now offer the floor to Mr. Preville. Mr. Preville, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I will go straight to the presentation made by Saint Kitts and Nevis and to agree that when you look at the region's migration patterns and the drivers of migration, they are basically development in nature. It's migration driven by the need to earn income and to increase people's standard of living. And therefore, Chair, what has Caricom done to help treat that? Well, we have, as we speak, economic partnership agreements, that is the CARI Forum, which is the Caricom and the Dominican Republic together. We have economic partnership agreements with Europe, we have it with the United Kingdom, we have one with free trade agreements right now with the United States, with Canada, we have a number of bilateral agreements with Colombia, Venezuela, Cuba. All of these are meant to cause the attraction of investment and business within the region. This has not worked as it was anticipated. So on the one hand, we are very clear that the demand for our skilled workers, especially in the health sector and others, will continue to grow in the OECD-demand-driven economy. So that is, there is no getting away from that. The question is, to what extent are these countries utilizing the agreements we already have in place to cause investment and economic activity within the Caricom region to take place, to cause higher income or higher wage-related employment to remain in the region? To what extent are we seeing efforts in that direction, cooperation in that direction? And I think, Chair, this is really where we need to put some emphasis, because I don't believe we will be able to restrict the movement of highly skilled persons. Everyone knows that the data shows that when it comes to labor migration, that it is highly, it is skilled and highly skilled persons who move the most. And in fact, that is why you have bilateral labor agreements that capture mainly agricultural sectors, such sectors where people need a structured framework to move because they don't move on their own, because they're unsure. The skilled workers are sure of themselves, they know how to navigate, and therefore they do not need a bilateral labor agreement. So, the point here is, if we are to treat with the brain drain, as we're seeing it, it requires us to make use of a number of tools, the tools we already have in place in terms of the agreements we have with the developed countries to invest in the region, to create sustainable jobs in the region, jobs that are related to mitigate global warming, clean jobs in the region. If we are seeing that happening, then as the ambassador from Saint Kitts indicates, has indicated, the economic driver, or the economic factor that is driving demand for our workers would no longer exist as such. Chair, just to indicate also that within Caricom, one of the ways using the OAS arrangements that Caricom has been able to mitigate some of the loss of its skilled labor in the health sector is by working very closely with Cuba. So, on the one hand, we have a number of our workers, our health professionals leaving, going to the OECD countries, and we have the benefit of working with Cuba through the OAS system to sort of do some partial replacement of that skill set. So, in a sense, we already seen cooperation taking place within the OAS framework in one particular sector, that's the health sector. But we need to see more, but more fundamentally, where it needs to be a reinvestment ID OECD in the Caricom region so that we would see a timing of that flow of our people from the region to the OECD-demand-driven countries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Preville. I now offer the floor to Mr. Makovic for a brief intervention regarding Dominica's question. Mr. Makovic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to address the question on improving condition for borrowing that was raised by the representatives from Dominica, because I think that's kind of an important potential role for multinationals and development financing institutions. So typically, what we see in the region, in this type of dialogue, is countries of origin are kind of reluctant to borrow, to finance programs that kind of are focused on circular migration. Because, I mean, it's difficult to find, you know, governments are worried that this can be counterproductive for them, because this might be seen as kind of financing additional brain drain, right? So why, as a country of origin, should I borrow, you know, to make more people leave, right? So there is a different way to address this, and this is linked to what I was mentioning before, as kind of a building operations that can help strengthen systems at the origin. So, for instance, like, for instance, these could be operations that finance jobs program in countries of origin, like thinking about a broad program, for instance, for jobs and skills for marginalized youth or for, you know, vulnerable youth in countries of origin. And this would be about strengthening training institution, strengthening the link with the private sector at home, providing better opportunities, and also entrepreneurship opportunities, maybe wage subsidies to facilitate access to formal jobs. But one component of that could be financing kind of safe labor mobility pathways, and multilateral institutions could convene and participate in this financing, for instance, donors from destination countries. So there could be a coexistence between a lending operation and a grant operation. So let's say, if you have, I'm inventing numbers here, a lending operation of $100 million to address, to finance jobs and skills for youth in origin countries, you might attract, you might be able to attract $10 million from a donor that is interested in financing, like, let's say, a specific component on bilateral migration and global skill partnership. So this, let's say, as a consequence of this, this immediately reduces actually the cost of borrowing, because instead of having an operation of $100 million, you would have an operation at the cost of $90 million because the grant lowers your borrowing cost. So I think that's the mindset that we need to kind of discuss, or we need to discuss, let's say, at the regional level. And I think as a suggestion, possibly going forward, it would be also important to have this type of fora extended also with the participation of Minister of Finances, for instance, that are key to, you know, for mobilizing financing to this type of agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have now come to the end of our interactive dialogue, and I see that there are no further questions. Therefore, on behalf of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development, I thank Mrs. Makovic, Preville, and Marzac for their informative presentations. Gentlemen, your contributions today have enriched our understanding of the issue and have pointed to some of the responses which we may consider for addressing it. We look forward to continuing our engagement as we collectively navigate the challenges associated with this phenomenon of brain drain. I thank you very much. I now invite member states to share their experiences, policy responses, recommendations, and offers of cooperation. Member states are kindly reminded that interventions should be limited to five minutes. I don't I don't think that I'm going to bell anyone this morning, I'm going to ask you to stick to your five minutes. I am now pleased to offer the floor to Costa Rica.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Quisiera agradecerle por la inclusión de este punto en la agenda y por la presencia y la invitación circulada a los distinguidos panelistas que nos acompañaron en la sesión de hoy y quien se están despidiendo en este momento en sala. Este tema reviste una importancia muy especial para nuestra delegación. Consideramos que la pérdida de talento humano no solo representa un desafío estructural, sino también una oportunidad para repensar nuestras políticas de desarrollo humano, innovación y cooperación solidaria. Hacer frente a la fuga de cerebros no es únicamente una cuestión política o económica, es sobre todo un proyecto de renovación nacional que exige confianza en nuestras instituciones y fe en un futuro mejor. En el caso costarricense, enfrentamos múltiples retos. El estudio realizado por Hipatia, que forma parte del programa Estado de la Nación sobre el estado de las capacidades en ciencia, tecnología e innovación, evidencia con preocupación, la falta de incentivos suficientes para vincular a profesionales altamente calificados con el ecosistema científico y tecnológico nacional, un poco en línea con las respuestas que escuchamos de los panelistas en la sesión de hoy. A ello se suman escasos estímulos para el retorno del talento que se encuentra en el exterior, así como limitaciones en inversión e infraestructura. Sin embargo, estos desafíos no son exclusivos de Costa Rica. América Latina y el Caribe comparten realidades similares: salarios poco competitivos, limitadas oportunidades de desarrollo profesional, insatisfacción con la gobernanza, inseguridad, corrupción y sistemas educativos que no responden a los desafíos del siglo XXI. Todos estos factores empujan a nuestros profesionales a buscar nuevos horizontes fuera de la región. A pesar de ello, Costa Rica ha apostado por fortalecer la formación de talento humano en áreas estratégicas como la tecnología, energías limpias, ciencias de la salud e idiomas, alineando su oferta académica con las necesidades del mercado nacional. Iniciativas como el programa Alianza para el Bilingüismo crean rutas efectivas de inserción laboral para jóvenes, reforzando su vínculo con el país. Asimismo, programas como el Sistema de Banca para el Desarrollo y el Parque la Libertad apoyan el emprendimiento joven e inclusivo, generando oportunidades locales con impacto global. Reconocemos, sin embargo, que para lograr una retención efectiva del talento humano es indispensable implementar estrategias integrales que aborden no solo las dimensiones económicas, sino también las sociales, políticas y de infraestructura. Incentivos fiscales pueden ayudar a reducir las brechas, pero no bastarán si no existe un entorno estable y confiable. De igual forma, un sistema educativo de calidad es condición necesaria, pero no suficiente para animar a los profesionales a permanecer o a retornar. En este esfuerzo por retener el talento humano resulta crucial garantizar oportunidades reales en zonas rurales y para las mujeres, quienes históricamente han enfrentado mayores barreras de acceso. Promover la descentralización del conocimiento y de la inversión implica fortalecer las capacidades locales, generar ecosistemas de innovación fuera de las capitales, y crear condiciones que permitan a las mujeres desarrollar su potencial en igualdad de condiciones. Esto no solo reduce brechas estructurales, sino que también enriquece el tejido social y económico con una participación más equitativa y representativa. Estas transformaciones requieren tiempo y compromiso. Por eso instamos a que este Consejo Interamericano y a los Estados miembros prioricemos la inversión en educación, la modernización curricular y la cooperación solidaria con universidades e instituciones extranjeras. Todo esto debe ir de la mano con el fortalecimiento del Estado derecho. En definitiva, revertir la fuga de cerebros implica más que evitar la partida de profesionales, exige mantener su vínculo activo con nuestros países, como lo escuchamos hoy con el tema de la diáspora y su vinculación con el país y el desarrollo, y convertir esos conocimientos y experiencias en un motor de cambio y desarrollo sostenible. Es un esfuerzo colectivo que, bien articulado, puede generar oportunidades donde antes hubo solamente desarrollo. Muchas gracias, señora presidenta.
Gracias, Embajadora. Con 12 segundos, más de los cinco minutos. Brasil, por favor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Muchas gracias, señora presidente. En primer lugar, gustaría de comprometer a la señora para la escuela del tema de nuestra discusión de hoy. Agradezco también a los panelistas, cuyas presentaciones aportaron informaciones y puntos de vista muy relevantes. Así como muchos países de nuestra región, el Brasil tiene enfrentado el desafío de la fuga de cerebros, con la inmigración creciente y profesionales altamente calificados. De modo de enfrentar ese problema, el país tiene desenvolvido una serie de políticas públicas focadas sobretodo en la retención y en el regreso del talento en las áreas académicas y de pesquisa. Entre las principales iniciativas que visan aumentar la atratividad de la permanencia en Brasil, destacan el aumento de la oferta de bolsas de pesquisa para graduación y pós-graduación, la coordinación de aperfeiçoamiento de personal de nivel superior, la CAPES, y también la ampliación del financiamiento a la pesquisa por medio del Fondo Nacional de Desenvolvimento Científico y Tecnológico, y por agencias de fomento como el Consejo Nacional de Desenvolvimento Científico y Tecnológico, CNPQ, y la financiadora de estudios y proyectos, FINEP. Con vistas a fortalecer la empleabilidad de los pesquisadores de punta, el Programa Nacional Cientista Líder de la CAPES promueve la inserción de pesquisadores altamente calificados como cientistas líderes en proyectos colaborativos entre universidades y órganos públicos. De la misma forma, señora presidente, la innovación es crucial para reter y atraer el talento. En ese sentido, el Gobierno brasileño ha estimulado el desarrollo de ambientes innovadores por medio de programas como el programa Centelia, o Connect a Startup, y el programa Más Innovación, todos del Ministerio de Ciencia, Tecnología e Innovación. La cooperación internacional constituye también estrategia importante para la retención de talentos. El Gobierno brasileño tiene desarrollado mecanismos que favorecen la circulación de cerebros, en lugar de la invasión, por medio de la inscripción de acuerdos de cooperación bilaterales y multilaterales, la abertura de llamadas conjuntas internacionales, y también la realización de programas de movilidad académica, como el programa MARCA Mercosur. Con relación a los brasileños que ya emigraron, señora presidente, medidas específicas han sido desarrolladas para estimular su retorno, con destaque para el programa de repatriación de talentos, conocimiento Brasil, además de programas desarrollados por agencias de fomento estadounidenses. Al mismo tiempo, nosotros reconocemos que en algunos casos específicos, la permanencia del pesquisador en el exterior puede revertir beneficios para el Brasil. La política de innovación de la CAPES permite, en casos justificados, la sustitución de obligación de retorno por alternativas de retribución, como actuación en proyectos de interés nacional o regional, la promoción de la ciencia brasileña en redes internacionales, y la colaboración con instituciones brasileñas, sea por medio de ensina a distancia, o parcerias, o hasta incluso coorientaciones. Por fin, señora presidente, así como fue dicho aquí por diversos que me antecederon, importa mencionar un importante papel que puede ser desempeñado por la diáspora académica. Muchos brasileños en el exterior mantienen fuerte el sentimiento de gratitud con el país y se interesan en contribuir con el desarrollo nacional, incluso que no tienen intención de regresar. En este contexto, destacan acciones como el programa Diplomacia de la Innovación, que visa movilizar a la diáspora y así ofrecer un camino para que los cientistas continúen a contribuir con la ciencia en nuestro país. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Brazil. I am now pleased to offer the floor to El Salvador. You have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Agradecemos las presentaciones realizadas. Nuestro país está consciente que en el contexto actual el fenómeno migratorio enfrenta un constante proceso de cambio y varía de acuerdo a la realidad de cada país. A pesar de los avances realizados, aún enfrentamos retos para fortalecer la responsabilidad compartida pero diferenciada en la movilidad humana. Es por ello que a fin de desarrollar estrategias para afrontar las causas estructurales que motivan la migración irregular, se ha priorizado un abordaje integral de la movilidad humana que contribuye por un lado a prevenir el éxodo del capital humano, pero a su vez promueve la migración regular, segura y ordenada. En este contexto, el programa de movilidad laboral posibilita esfuerzos articulados con entes gubernamentales, organismos internacionales y el sector privado para lograr una movilidad laboral bien gestionada. El programa hace posible procesos de contratación con empresas empleadoras mediante un reclutamiento ordenado, el monitoreo de condiciones laborales y el control del retorno y la reintegración de quienes participan. Impulsamos asimismo la migración inversa como una apuesta estratégica para abordar la fuga de cerebros, aprovechar el capital humano formado en el exterior y generar condiciones que propicien el retorno de nuestros cognacionales al país como socios para el desarrollo. El Salvador ha desarrollado también el programa de pasantías con la diáspora, a fin de crear oportunidades para que estudiantes, miembros de la diáspora puedan aplicar en el país los conocimientos adquiridos en el extranjero mediante pasantías profesionales en instituciones clave del gobierno de El Salvador. Este programa, además de facilitar la transferencia de conocimientos en áreas estratégicas como turismo, educación, niñez, obras públicas y cultura, busca incentivar el regreso progresivo y voluntario de los talentos salvadoreños, contribuyendo hacia la reconstrucción y la transformación del país. En su primera edición recibió 145 postulaciones desde siete países. A estas acciones se suman iniciativas como la Ley Especial Transitoria de Incentivos y Tratos Preferenciales, destinada al favorecimiento de la repatriación de salvadoreños, y el programa de servicios El Salvador Más, que busca fortalecer el acceso y conocimiento de los servicios disponibles para la diáspora salvadoreña. Señora presidenta, el diálogo e intercambio de experiencias que hoy desarrollamos representa una oportunidad para potenciar las iniciativas nacionales de nuestros estados, a través de la cooperación regional y encontrar sinergias entre estos, los organismos internacionales, la sociedad civil, academia, asociaciones de diásporas y otros actores claves para el desarrollo de mercados laborales inclusivos y de alto valor, que ofrezcan oportunidades significativas para que los profesionales prosperen en nuestros países. El Salvador ha privilegiado la mejora de las condiciones de vida de los hogares salvadoreños, la generación de oportunidades de empleo e invertir en su desarrollo integral. Estamos trabajando para establecer bases sólidas que permitan obtener un crecimiento económico, inclusivo y sostenible. Reiteramos el compromiso y el respaldo de mi país para seguir aportando desde nuestra realidad experiencia y capacidades para promover la retención de talento e identificar vías de cooperación para fortalecer el capital humano de nuestro hemisferio. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, El Salvador. Now offer the floor to Saint Vincent and the Grenadines.
Thank you, Chair. Chair of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development, Ambassador Luang Gilkeris, permanent representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, permanent representatives, Executive Secretary of the Secretariat for Integral Development, alternates, guest speakers, staff at the Secretariat, good morning. Chair, this is a topic that has sparked broad debate for generations in the Caribbean community and is increasingly at the center of the development agenda. The exodus of trained and skilled professionals attracted to higher prospective returns abroad and invited by immigration policies that specifically targets them enriches foreign nations immeasurably but impinges on the long-term development of the source nations, draining their pool of local talents. Conversely, the multi-dimensional vulnerabilities of the small island developing states push professionals and trained workers out of the islands to high-income destinations. The situation is alarming, Chair. Accordingly, the government of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines has been flexible in its development strategy, cognizant of its changing development circumstances. Its investment in education and the education revolution on a whole propelled workers to pursue high-value opportunities abroad in the absence of such locally. Concomitantly, this situation is beneficial and transformational. The diáspora is an asset that plays a significant role in developing opportunities locally. Besides remittance flows, one of the potential conduits of their capacity is to develop local entrepreneurial spirit through business incubators, angel investing, or joint ventures. They also help to establish business and trade networks between our country and the host countries, given their familiarity with market opportunities, preferences, and business contacts. Another channel that shows potential is the exchange of researchers visiting students' and lecturers' program for the purpose of training, expertise, and knowledge transfer, sorry, and also the provision of robust educational opportunities through scholarship programs to the further cost of higher educational attainment abroad. Chair, we must identify ways to collaborate and seek deeper diáspora engagement and cooperation to harness the full potential of the brain drain phenomenon so that all parties involved can benefit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. I'm now pleased to offer the floor to Mexico. Mexico, you have the floor, please.
Gracias, señora presidenta. México promueve un modelo humanitario de movilidad humana que coloca a las personas en el centro de sus objetivos y prioriza las causas estructurales de la migración, buscando ampliar y diversificar las vías regulares de movilidad laboral y gestionar los flujos irregulares en estricto apego a los derechos humanos. Aplica un enfoque multisectorial, pluridimensional, corresponsable, transversal, incluyente y con perspectiva de género, que implementa en cumplimiento de instrumentos jurídicos nacionales e internacionales y otras iniciativas como el Pacto Mundial para una migración segura, ordenada, regular, así como la Agenda 2030 de Desarrollo Sostenible. La llamada fuga de cerebros o movilidad internacional de migración calificada y altamente calificada requiere tener presente que las causas y consecuencias de este fenómeno son multidimensionales. Se trata de un suceso estrechamente relacionado con las nuevas dinámicas de las fuerzas productivas y de la arquitectura de los ecosistemas de innovación. En el caso de México, más de 11 millones de personas viven en el exterior, el 97% de ellos en Estados Unidos según cifras de 2023. La migración mexicana con estudios superiores representó el 9% de esta cifra y ha experimentado un crecimiento muy dinámico desde la década de los 90. Estados Unidos sigue siendo el principal destino para migrantes mexicanos calificados, aunque también sobresalen otros destinos como España, Suiza, Canadá y también Colombia. Tendencia que es más marcada en mexicanos con estudios de posgrado que de licenciatura, y se concentran mayormente en áreas de administración, negocios, finanzas, educación, salud y en disciplinas científicas, tecnológicas, particularmente en ingenierías y matemáticas. Según estudios basados en datos de la Oficina del Bureau del Censo de los Estados Unidos, las personas mexicanas con educación superior en ese país pasaron de 155,852 en 1990 a 1.3 millones en 2020, es decir, aumentaron 8.5 veces su tamaño, siendo los grupos a nivel licenciatura los que experimentaron un mayor crecimiento. En esta tendencia sobresale una importante participación de las mujeres inmigrantes. México ocupa la cuarta posición de población migrante con posgrado en Estados Unidos después de India, China y Corea del Sur, lo que destaca su relevancia en la dinámica económica de este país. La migración mexicana con posgrado muestra un perfil laboral activo y un bajo nivel de desempleo, con un 79.1% de los posgraduados económicamente activos y un 96.8% que logra un buen empleo, cifras que podrían seguir aumentando en campos de alta demanda como ingeniería, ciencias básicas y áreas de salud. La política migratoria mexicana mantiene una estrecha relación con su diáspora a través de la red consular. Solo en Estados Unidos México tiene veintitrés consulados. Es la red consular más grande del mundo. También a través del Instituto de Mexicanas y Mexicanos en el Exterior con sus ventanillas de servicios múltiples y de la red global MX dirigida específicamente a la vinculación de México con su migración calificada en el marco del decidido e inclusivo impulso que el gobierno de México da al fortalecimiento de su desarrollo nacional. Se busca conocer y medir los impactos positivos de los programas implementados para reducir la probabilidad de seguir migrando de nuestros connacionales y a la vez compartir experiencias con los países con mayor índice migratorio en nuestra región. Señora Presidenta, la región de las Américas enfrenta el reto de lograr la retención de su población calificada y la OEA tiene que ser un espacio para el diálogo e intercambio de experiencias y buenas prácticas que promuevan políticas públicas y estrategias de gestión de migración calificada humanista para que migrar sea una decisión y no una necesidad. Es esencial fomentar un entorno propicio para la innovación y el desarrollo profesional de nuestros propios países, alentar el retorno e inserción de nuestros becarios, atender la homologación de títulos profesionales y de habilidades e impulsar una mayor cooperación en este ámbito, así como la recopilación de datos sobre migración calificada. Gracias, Presidenta.
Gracias, Embajadora. Ofrezco la palabra a la delegación de Colombia.
Señor presidente, distinguidos delegados. Colombia reconoce que la fuga de cerebros representa un desafío regional de alto impacto. Sin embargo, el país ha apostado por transformar este fenómeno en una oportunidad mediante políticas públicas integrales, transformándolo en una oportunidad de circulación para retener, repatriar y reconectar el talento altamente calificado. En primer lugar, destacamos el papel del Ministerio de Ciencia, Tecnología e Innovación que ha promovido políticas para la formación avanzada con retorno asegurado. A través del programa Doctorados Nacionales y en el Exterior se otorgan becas con compromisos de retorno y vinculación laboral o académica en el país. En segundo lugar, se ha fortalecido la articulación entre academia, empresa y estado con incentivos para que los investigadores formados en el exterior encuentren ecosistemas de innovación atractivos al regresar. Una de las iniciativas más destacadas es el programa Colombia Científica, liderado por el Ministerio de Educación en alianza con el Ministerio de Ciencia y el ICETEX. Este programa articula universidades, empresas y centros de investigación y financia proyectos de alto impacto en áreas estratégicas como salud, energía, agroindustria y sostenibilidad. Su estructura promueve la vinculación de doctores formados en el exterior que lideran nodos de investigación y transfieren conocimientos a nivel nacional. Hasta la fecha ha apoyado más de cien proyectos generando publicaciones científicas, patentes y formación avanzada de nuevo talento. Además, desde el programa de Colombia Nos une del Ministerio de Relaciones Exteriores se ha promovido una estrategia de diáspora científica mediante plataformas como la Red Caldas, conectando científicos colombianos en el exterior con instituciones académicas y proyectos nacionales. A través de esta red, los investigadores pueden participar en asesorías, seminarios, codirección de tesis o colaboraciones técnicas sin necesidad de un retorno permanente. Esta visión de cerebros circulantes permite que el conocimiento fluya sin perderse. En cuanto a los incentivos fiscales y financieros, Colombia ha adoptado mecanismos concretos. Por ejemplo, el estatuto tributario en su artículo ciento cincuenta y ocho permite deducción hasta de ciento setenta y cinco por ciento en el impuesto de renta por inversiones privadas en ciencia y tecnología, lo cual ha estimulado la creación de startups y centros de innovación liderados por retornados. Además, Ban Coldex y el Fondo Emprender han creado líneas especiales del crédito y capital semilla para profesionales altamente calificados que regresan al país con planes de negocio o proyectos de base tecnológica. Señora Presidente, estas experiencias demuestran que enfrentar la fuga de cerebros requiere no solo retener talento sino crear condiciones para que regrese o se vincule productivamente desde el exterior a las necesidades del país. Colombia está comprometida con compartir estas buenas prácticas y promover una agenda hemisférica para el desarrollo del talento científico y la innovación. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Colombia. I now offer the floor to Ecuador.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta, por darme el uso de la palabra. Señora presidenta, representantes permanentes y alternos, autoridades y personal de la CDI y a todos los presentes en sala. Agradezco a los panelistas por las interesantes presentaciones y por traer a esta mesa un tema de tanta importancia y trascendencia para nuestros países y la región. De igual manera, se agradece a la presidencia del CDI y a la secretaría por abordar este tema que es cada vez más importante por los impactos así como las oportunidades que tiene esta tendencia en el capital humano de nuestros países. Estos espacios son necesarios para la formulación de políticas públicas que permitan que nuestros ciudadanos desarrollen sus habilidades en nuestras naciones, se fomenten espacios de cooperación entre nuestros países con el objetivo de evitar la fuga de cerebros de los países de origen. Como ustedes conocen, el Ecuador es un país tanto emisor como receptor de migración y por ello se ha visto en la necesidad de implementar políticas públicas que busquen asegurar los derechos de las personas, mejorar su calidad de vida y alcanzar objetivos de desarrollo que permitan abordar esta problemática y por el contrario identificar las posibilidades de cooperación para evitar la fuga de cerebros y más bien abordar la perspectiva de desarrollo de capacidades e iniciativas laborales. En este sentido, el Ecuador ha implementado normativas que van en esa línea tales como la Ley para la Igualdad Salarial Entre Hombres y Mujeres, la Ley Orgánica de Economía Violeta que identifica sobre todo proyectos de crédito para mujeres, Ley de Deficiencia Económica y Generación de Empleo y Programa de Migración Circular Controlada y Segura. El gobierno de Ecuador es consciente que la tasa de desempleo y el subempleo es la principal causa de migración. Por tanto, todas las acciones que se implementen buscan mejorar las condiciones del mercado laboral e ir a la par con las tecnologías crecientes. Entre las principales acciones que Ecuador está trabajando son: reformas educativas alineadas a las demandas del mercado laboral y las tendencias tecnológicas, mayor inversión en ciencia, tecnología e innovación destinando recursos para el desarrollo de sectores que creen oportunidades laborables; la implementación de normativa que permita promover la creación de nuevos empleos. En los programas de capacitación también se puede incluir aspectos relacionados con innovación, emprendimiento y tecnología, preparando a la fuerza laboral para los desafíos del mercado global, promoviendo un desarrollo económico sostenible, así como incentivos por participación en capacitación, alianzas con instituciones educativas y de capacitación de programas de especialización y posgrado. En este sentido, la Secretaría de Educación Superior, Ciencia y Tecnología e Innovación, CNCID y el programa de las Naciones Unidas para el Desarrollo PNUT suscribieron un acuerdo de financiación por ejecución del programa para el fortalecimiento de actividades de ciencia, tecnología e innovación INDERAMBL con una inversión aproximada de cuatro millones hasta el año veinte veintiséis. Como lo dije anteriormente, se debe procurar contar con mecanismos que puedan facilitar la cooperación de beneficio mutuo entre los países de origen y de destino. Como los programas de migración circular controlados y seguros han demostrado tener un resultado favorable tanto para el país emisor como el receptor, así como lo anunció el ponente del Banco Mundial cuando señaló al Ecuador como ejemplo. Los convenios de reconocimiento mutuo de títulos profesionales, becas de estudio de grado y posgrado en retorno asegurado, proyectos de investigación binacionales, reinserción laboral, contratos temporales con retorno garantizado, la certificación por competencias laborales y los fondos de multilaterales que permitan financiar proyectos de innovación, ciencia y tecnología. Son por citar algunos de los programas que han marcado gran apertura y posibilidad de generar trabajo, inversión en el país dando un aliciente especialmente a jóvenes, mujeres y emprendedores. La colaboración público-privada es clave para la generación de empleo, por lo cual el gobierno ecuatoriano promueve los incentivos tributarios para impulsar la creación de plazas de trabajo y ayuden a preservar el talento local. Para alcanzar este objetivo, es importante incrementar la inversión pública en investigación, desarrollo e innovación que esté alineada con las necesidades del sector económico. El Ministerio de Trabajo del Ecuador impulsa la formación dual para que los jóvenes en una jornada de ocho horas, cuatro sean capacitados y cuatro pongan en práctica lo aprendido. Ante la creciente pérdida del talento calificado en América Latina y el Caribe, este consejo debe asumir un rol protagónico y transformador en la creación de condiciones estructurales que permita generar, atraer y retener empleos altamente calificados. Esto requiere no solo fortalecer las capacidades internas del estado mediante estrategias de capacidad continua, elevación del desempleo y desarrollo del talento humano, sino también articular políticas públicas que impulsen la inversión privada en sectores estratégicos como tecnología, salud, educación superior, energías renovables e inteligencia artificial capaces de ofrecer oportunidades reales de desarrollo profesional. Pero sobre todo, se requiere la cooperación en nuestros países que permita promocionar las buenas prácticas y cambiar la fuga de cerebros por el desarrollo de oportunidades. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Ecuador. I now offer the floor to Chile.
Gracias, presidenta. Ya no están los panelistas, pero gracias a los panelistas por su intervención. Especialmente el diálogo con las preguntas de las delegaciones nos pareció muy valioso para acercarnos hasta este desafío que como decía Jason Marzac no puede verse anahiglado, sino hay que pensarlo en toda la la complejidad que tiene cuando hablamos de retener a los talentos nacionales cuando desde el extranjero aparecen mejores oportunidades laborales, mayores salarios, posibilidades de desarrollo que aparecían no disponibles en territorio local. Entonces, esa mirada de verlo como algo integral parte de lo que nos interesa compartir de lo que se está haciendo en Chile, las delegaciones, en su avance y problemas. Tiene que ver con temas de calidad de vida en global. Creo que hay cosas importantes que señalar ahí como la reducción de jornada laboral e incrementar los salarios, la transformación que se está haciendo en el sistema de previsión social. Nos parece que también va en esa línea. Y también pensados de las edades más tempranas, aquí nos interesa compartir el programa de promoción de talentos académicos, presidenta, que desde hace ya casi veinte años viene seleccionando, viene apoyando a estudiantes de alto rendimiento, especialmente de mayor vulnerabilidad económica, en integrarlo a la educación terciaria, a mitigar brechas de aprendizaje previo y asegurar que se mantengan primero en el sistema escolar y después en el sistema superior. El economista Makovich recordaba en su respuesta el programa Becas Chile del que personalmente fui uno de los beneficiarios y hace ya quince años atrás, presidenta, y que en esa época de bonanza económica, cuando el precio del cobre estuvo más alto que lo habitual, la puesta de Chile fue invertir en formar miles de, en ese entonces, jóvenes en las mejores universidades del mundo para que pudieran volver a Chile a trabajar. Allí apareció, quince años después de este proceso, diferente aprendizaje que nos parece relevante, especialmente cuando pensamos en la deficiencia de este programa. Este programa reprodujo problemas estructurales de Chile. Por ejemplo, fue especialmente, no se lo propuso, pero terminó siendo centralista a la hora de elegir quiénes se beneficiaban. Fuimos más los de Santiago que los de ciudades pequeñas. Terminó atendiendo más a la demanda de quienes postulábamos que a las necesidades nacionales de formación de áreas y representó especialmente para quienes tuvieron doctorado dificultades de reincertarse en un país donde el sistema universitario es todavía de tamaño acotado. Somos un país de dieciocho millones de habitantes y formar miles de doctores afuera representa un desafío importante cuando deben volver a trabajar a Chile. Con todo, nos parece que esta idea de invertir los recursos de bonanza económica en formar talento y que deban volver al país a trabajar, ya sea en el sector público, en el sector privado, permite acercarnos a cómo vamos desarrollando los mercados laborales, las industrias nacionales de un modo de retener con mayor virtud el talento que se genera en nuestros países. ¿Qué más se está haciendo? Una serie de diálogos entre ciencia, educación y empresa. La idea que la formación universitaria, la formación de talento de alto nivel dialogue mejor con las necesidades del mercado, con las necesidades de la empresa de modo de fortalecer la vinculación de investigadores científicos con empresas, con organizaciones territoriales relevando de ese modo, multiplicando de ese modo las oportunidades laborales dentro de Chile. ¿Qué más nos parece relevante compartir en este minuto que nos queda? La inversión en infraestructura tecnológica, presidenta, nos parece que es vital y cómo se articula esto con sistemas de potenciamiento de startups, de empresas innovadoras que permitan que estos profesionales especialmente calificados puedan quedarse en nuestros países, gozar de incentivos para iniciar su desarrollo y desde ahí generar trabajo en nuestros países, exportar y estar muy y respondiendo a los temas de fuga de cerebros. A nivel regional, muy brevemente, nos parece que OEA puede ser un lugar propicio para avanzar en en hacer homologable los estudios, los cursos, los créditos, los títulos entre países de modo que la circulación entre nuestros países también sea más vital y de ese modo podamos ir colaborando y reteniendo como región a nuestros mejores talentos para desarrollarse en nuestros países. Muchas gracias, presidenta.
Thank you, Chile. I now offer the floor to the Dominican Republic.
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Agradecemos a la presidencia de este consejo por la convocatoria a esta reunión. Asimismo, expresamos nuestro agradecimiento a los panelistas por la valiosa información que nos han proporcionado, de la cual nuestra delegación ha tomado de vida nota. Señora presidenta, la fuga de cerebros es una realidad que afecta cada vez más las economías emergentes en un contexto global donde la movilidad laboral ha aumentado significativamente. Esta fuga de cerebro tiene un impacto negativo en el desarrollo económico y social en nuestros países ya que implica la pérdida de talentos y conocimientos que podrían contribuir al crecimiento de nuestras naciones, generando además una brecha en la disponibilidad de profesionales calificados y por ende dificultad en el desarrollo de sectores claves. En República Dominicana, este fenómeno representa uno de los retos más preocupantes evidenciado en la creciente cantidad de jóvenes capacitados que migran a otros países impulsados por situaciones como la falta de oportunidades, la escasa valorización del talento, la situación económica, los bajos salarios y la búsqueda de condiciones laborables más dignas. Estos factores impulsan a muchos profesionales a ofrecer sus servicios en empresas internacionales en búsqueda de mejores condiciones de vida y desarrollo profesional. Señora presidenta, es importante señalar que anteriormente el término fuga de cerebros se refería exclusivamente a quienes se trasladaban físicamente a otros países en busca de mejores condiciones. No obstante, a raíz de la pandemia del COVID diecinueve, la virtualidad ha simplificado la transferencia de conocimientos y la habilidades a través de medios digitales. La globalización a su vez ha acelerado el flujo de información facilitando también la migración virtual del talento. Como bien expresó nuestra vicepresidenta Raquel Peña, el liderazgo empresarial va más allá de la creación de empleos. Se trata de invertir en el talento y contribuir a la edificación de comunidades donde la educación sea la base del crecimiento y del bienestar de todos. República Dominicana reconoce que es fundamental que los sectores público y privado trabajen de manera conjunta para fortalecer el sistema educativo y crear oportunidades que retengan el talento nacional. Frente a este desafío, nuestro gobierno ha definido una ruta clara de trabajo para construir un país en el que nuestros jóvenes puedan desarrollar su potencial y prosperar en su propia tierra. Estas iniciativas para enfrentar esta problemática se destacan sólo algunas. El programa Oportunidad catorce veinticuatro enfocado en promover la inclusión socioeconómica de jóvenes entre catorce y veinticuatro años desvinculados del sistema educativo o del mercado laboral y pertenecientes a hogares en situación de alta vulnerabilidad. La ampliación y diversificación de las ofertas educativas tanto de manera presencial como virtual del Instituto Nacional de Formación Técnico Profesional Infotep. La creación y modernización de los centros del Instituto Tecnológico de las Américas, ITLA, así como de centros tecnológicos comunitarios que han transformado la educación técnica y profesi- así como de centros tecnológicos comunitarios que han transformado la educación técnica y profesional. Y el impulso a una industria local de semiconductores mediante proyectos como Chip Driver que buscan atraer inversiones tecnológicas avanzadas y preparar personal calificado para aprovechar estas oportunidades. Señora Presidenta, reconocemos la imperiosa necesidad de continuar generando oportunidades que desafíen, motiven y permitan a la juventud de formarse, desarrollarse y aportar activamente el progreso, al progreso de nuestras naciones. En ese sentido, resulta esencial una distribución más equitativa de las ganancias y beneficios ofrecidos por las empresas en estricto apego a los marcos legales vigentes de cada país, así como fomentar ambientes laborales adecuados que favorezcan la estabilidad de la empleomanía. Invertir en la educación, fortalecer la formación técnica, mejorar las condiciones laborales y promover una cultura de equidad y bienestar son pasos indispensables para construir naciones más próperas, inclusivas y resilientes. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much Dominican Republic, I now offer the floor to Paraguay.
Muchas gracias, Señora Presidenta. En nombre de la delegación del Paraguay, deseamos expresar nuestro reconocimiento por la oportunidad de abordar este tema tan crucial, la fuga de cerebros y los esfuerzos por retener y potenciar el talento humano en nuestros países. Sobre el punto, además, agradecemos a los panelistas por sus interesantes intervenciones de las que hemos tomado de vida nota. Paraguay reconoce que la fuga de cerebros representa un desafío estructural, especialmente para economías en desarrollo como la nuestra. Sin embargo, también creemos que con voluntad política y cooperación regional puede transformarse en una oportunidad estratégica. Uno de los pilares de nuestra política nacional en este ámbito es el Programa Nacional de Becas Carlos Antonio López, BECAL, que financia estudios de posgrado en el extranjero con el compromiso de retorno y reinserción en el país. Los resultados son alentadores. El ochenta y nueve por ciento de los becarios retornados está actualmente trabajando en el Paraguay y de ellos, el ochenta por ciento lo hace en un área vinculada a su formación especializada. Este impacto positivo es especialmente visible en el sector público, donde muchos de estos profesionales ocupan cargos estratégicos en la educación y en políticas públicas. Sin embargo, somos conscientes de que aún enfrentamos desafíos particularmente en garantizar mejores condiciones laborales y profesionales para evitar que este talento vuelva a emigrar. Por ello, hemos impulsado redes de colaboración entre profesionales paraguayos en el exterior y al sector productivo nacional, así como mecanismos para facilitar la reinserción laboral de los becarios en sectores estratégicos. Por otro lado, para abordar las causas estructurales de la inmigración, el Paraguay ha avanzado en una agenda de desarrollo laboral e industrial inclusiva en el marco del Plan Nacional de Desarrollo Paraguay 2030. Esta política promueve la formalización del empleo, el fortalecimiento de la educación técnica y profesional y el impulso de sectores con alto potencial como la tecnología, la agroindustria y las energías renovables. En ese sentido, creemos firmemente que la respuesta no debe ser sólo la retención, sino la movilización estratégica del talento. La diáspora paraguaya puede ser una aliada clave para el desarrollo nacional junto con la cooperación internacional. Por ello, alentamos a los Estados miembros de la OEA a avanzar en esquemas de cooperación para fortalecer las redes de talento en el exterior, promover programas de retorno circular y consolidar una visión compartida sobre la movilidad del conocimiento en nuestra región. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much Paraguay, and now offer the floor to Peru.
Gracias, Señora Presidenta. Permítame comenzar a agradeciéndole por convocar a esta tan enriquecedora reunión en un tema tan urgente y complejo como es la fuga de cerebros en nuestra región. Asimismo, un especial agradecimiento a los panelistas que nos acompañaron hoy. Como se ha mencionado, la inmigración de personas altamente calificadas representan una preocupación creciente para América Latina y el Caribe, que enfrenta ahora el desafío de retener ese talento en un contexto de oportunidades globalizadas. Desde el Perú reconocemos que la mejor estrategia para enfrentar la fuga de cerebros es generar condiciones que motiven a los profesionales a desarrollar su potencial en el propio país. En ese sentido, queremos destacar algunas buenas prácticas e iniciativas concretas que reflejan el compromiso del Estado peruano con la retención de talento y la cooperación estratégica. En primer lugar, el Programa Nacional de Becas y Crédito Educativo, Pronavec, además de brindar acceso a estudios superiores de calidad a jóvenes de alto rendimiento académico y escasos recursos, incluye un enfoque orientado al retorno y reinserción de los becarios al mercado laboral peruano. El programa Beca Presidente de la República, por ejemplo, financia estudios de maestría y doctorado en universidades del extranjero, promoviendo el retorno de los beneficiarios para que contribuyan con su formación al desarrollo del país. En segundo lugar, el Consejo Nacional de Ciencia, Tecnología e Innovación Tecnológica, CONZITEC, impulsa mecanismos de repatriación y vinculación con científicos peruanos residentes en el extranjero. Iniciativas como incorporación de investigadores o la red de científicos peruanos en el exterior permiten establecer puentes activos de cooperación y transferencia de conocimiento. Asimismo, el Perú ha promovido políticas de atracción y retención de talento en sectores estratégicos mediante programas como Reto Bio, enfocado en biotecnología o Startup Peru, que ofrece financiamiento y acompañamiento técnico a emprendimientos de alto impacto, muchos de los cuales han sido fundados por profesionales formados en el extranjero que decidieron regresar al país. Desde una perspectiva regional, creemos que la cooperación es clave. Se requiere avanzar hacia marcos colaborativos que reconozcan el valor de nuestras diásporas como aliadas estratégicas del desarrollo. En ese sentido, el Perú está abierto a explorar alianzas que faciliten el intercambio de conocimientos, la movilidad circular y la inversión en capacidades humanas. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much Peru, we offer the floor now to Guatemala.
Muchas gracias, Presidenta. La delegación de Guatemala expresa su reconocimiento a los distinguidos panelistas por las presentaciones compartidas en esta sesión. Coincidimos en que contener la fuga de cerebros y a la vez aprovechar el potencial de nuestro capital humano se trata de un desafío urgente que exige respuestas integrales y sostenibles. En Guatemala estamos avanzando hacia un modelo de desarrollo centrado en las personas, guiado por el Plan Nacional de Desarrollo CATUN, nuestra Guatemala 2032, y la Política General de Gobierno 2024-2028. En este marco, el bono demográfico ocupa un lugar central. Actualmente, Guatemala cuenta con una de las poblaciones más jóvenes en la región. Cerca del sesenta por ciento tiene menos de treinta años. Esta realidad es una oportunidad única, pero también es una carrera contra el tiempo para invertir decididamente en atender las causas estructurales de la migración. Por esa razón, apostamos a fortalecer nuestro capital humano desde las etapas más tempranas en la vida. La inversión en salud y nutrición infantil es una, es una prioridad. Como lo demuestra la Gran Cruzada Nacional por la Nutrición, que amplía la cobertura de atención integral en comunidades históricamente excluidas, sabemos que un desarrollo cognitivo y físico adecuado en la niñez es clave para construir una fuerza laboral preparada en el futuro. En el ámbito educativo, trabajamos para reducir la deserción escolar, modernizar el currículo y fortalecer la formación docente. Un ejemplo de ello es el programa Becas por Nuestro Futuro, impulsado por CEGPLAN, que en su primer mes ha registrado más de treinta mil jóvenes beneficiarios. Este programa promueve la permanencia educativa y la especialización de habilidades alineadas con la demanda del mercado laboral, tanto dentro como fuera del país. A la vez, la formación debiera acompañada de oportunidades reales. Actualmente, más del setenta por ciento del trabajo en Guatemala se encuentra en el sector informal, lo que limita la productividad y genera incertidumbre. Por ello, impulsamos políticas activas para fortalecer el ecosistema de emprendimiento y empleo formal. La Política Nacional de Desarrollo de la MIPIME 2024-2032 y la Política Nacional de Emprendimiento promueven el acceso a financiamiento, asistencia técnica y simplificación de trámites, además del fortalecimiento de la propiedad intelectual. Complementariamente, con el, con la Estrategia Nacional de Atracción de Inversión Extranjera Directa 2024-2027, buscamos integrar nuestras MIPIMEs a cadenas de valor globales, generar empleo de calidad y dinamizar sectores estratégicos como manufactura, servicios, tecnologías de la información y energías limpias. Asimismo, iniciativas como la Beca Mi Primer Empleo, impulsada por el Ministerio de Trabajo y Previsión Social, ofrece a jóvenes entre dieciocho y veinticuatro años de edad la oportunidad de desempeñarse como aprendices en empresas del sector privado, con el objetivo de crear competencias laborales y facilitar la inserción de los jóvenes al mercado formal de trabajo. Guatemala también reconoce el valor transformador de nuestros connacionales migrantes, que han adquirido competencias y experiencias valiosas en el exterior. A través de programas de certificación de competencias, incubación de negocios y acceso preferencial a los servicios financieros, estamos facilitando su retorno digno y productivo. Creemos firmemente que su reintegración puede fortalecer todas nuestras economías locales y enriquecer nuestro tejido social. Todos estos esfuerzos están guiados por una visión de seguridad humana, proteger la vida, los derechos, la dignidad y las capacidades de las personas. Y para ello necesitamos un estado eficiente, pero también alianzas sólidas con el sector privado, la academia, la sociedad civil y nuestros socios internacionales. En ese sentido, reconocemos y agradecemos el papel clave de la OEA como plataforma de cooperación técnica y diálogo. Iniciativas educativas, a través de esos programas de becas, han demostrado ser herramientas valiosas para facilitar el desarrollo educativo y profesional en nuestra juventud. Asimismo, socios como Lyon Americas Business Trust han promovido el emprendimiento juvenil en nuestras comunidades y el Trust for the Americas ha contribuido significativamente en formación digital, empleabilidad y acceso a tecnología para jóvenes en situación de vulnerabilidad. Señora Presidenta, estamos convencidos de que la mejor política migratoria es una buena política de desarrollo, una que brinde oportunidades para que quedarse en el país sea una opción digna y sostenible y para que regresar sea una posibilidad real para quienes migran. Guatemala reitera su compromiso con este objetivo y su disposición para seguir cooperando activamente en el marco del CIE. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much Guatemala, I'm now pleased to offer the floor to Sanket Sannevis.
Thank you Chair, excellencies and esteemed colleagues, I greet you according to the normal protocols. Sanket Sannevis, like other Caribbean nations, has historically seen a substantial portion of its educated workforce leave for more developed countries. For us specifically, historical data indicates a significant outflow of skilled individuals. So, why does this happen? The reasons are a complex combination of push and pull factors. Push factors often include limited local job opportunities, matching specific skills, and sometimes a desire for broad experiences and advanced training not readily available at home. On the other hand, pull factors from developed countries are strong. Higher wages, better professional development prospects, access to cutting-edge technology and research, and often more robust social services and infrastructure. Chair, the impact of this exodus is profound. When our brightest minds and most skilled professionals leave, we lose critical human capital, essential for national development. This can lead to shortages in vital sectors like healthcare, education, public administration. Imagine the impact on our hospitals if our doctors and nurses were to leave. The impact on our schools if our best teachers seek opportunities abroad. This loss can hinder innovation, economic diversification, and the overall progress of our nation. It also represents a significant return on investment loss as the resources spent on educating these individuals don't fully benefit our economy. However, it's not all doom and gloom, Chair and colleagues. Sanket Sannevis recognizes the importance of addressing brain drain and so there is a growing focus on fueling development at home while engaging with our diaspora. This engagement was formalized through the establishment over two decades ago of the returning national secretariat that facilitates the return of our drained human capital. There is a concerted effort to create a more attractive environment at home. This includes resettlement assistance, incentivizing sustainable job creation, diversifying our economy beyond traditional sectors, invested in resilient healthcare and education infrastructure with a focus on ITC and fostering skills development through vocational training programs. Ultimately, combating brain drain is about creating a thriving, resilient and opportunity-rich society where our citizens feel empowered to contribute their talents at home. It's a long-term endeavor, but by fostering strategic partnerships, embracing innovation, prioritizing the well-being and professional growth of our people, Sanket Sannevis can turn this challenge into an opportunity for brain gain while our brightest minds return, bringing with them new skills and experiences and enriching our nation for generations to come. May it please you, Chair.
Thank you Sanket Sannevis, I now offer the floor to Grenada.
Thank you distinguished Chair, esteemed colleagues, glad for this opportunity to contribute to the dialogue on strategic action for addressing brain drain through talent retention and cooperation. And the panelists as well for their meaningful and for their very informed presentations. Grenada too has long contended with the complex impacts of skilled emigration, commonly what we call the brain drain. From education and healthcare to the public service and even the digital economy, we see the effects of the outflow of talent and capacities. But we also are deeply aware that our diaspora represents not just a loss, but a powerful asset for national renewal. And in this spirit and in this few minutes we have, I'd just like to share that we have taken deliberate steps to reposition our approach to this. Central to this is the National Diaspora Policy, which is now in its final stages and being reformed. The policy enshrines the view that our diaspora is not peripheral, but integral to our development, whether our citizens are at home or abroad. It outlines a clear mechanism to facilitate engagement, investment, knowledge transfer and return migration, circular migration as it was mentioned during the panel, temporary or permanent. The policy is implemented through the Grenada Diaspora Advisory Council, which is a globally representative body of professionals advising on long-term development priorities. It has already proven an effective bridge between the state and the Grenadian communities abroad. But policy must be backed by action, and for this again we just give an example. A tangible example is Grenada's recent partnership with Monseigneur Hospital in New York. Through a formal cooperation agreement, Grenadian experts and diaspora physicians are collaborating with Monseigneur's specialists to review our national health system and advise on the design of a modernized health sector administration. This kind of partnership not only strengthens national institutions, but exemplifies a kind of diaspora-linked cooperation that can bridge persistent development gaps through the brain drain phenomenon. As we move forward and take into consideration some of the recommendations made during the session, I'd just like to mention some of the pillars for the focus that are critical for transforming the brain drain into a brain gain. The circular migration pathways supported by policies that recognize foreign experience and enable returning professionals to reintegrate with minimal red tape, with little or no bureaucracy. Sector-specific cooperation agreements such as the one I just mentioned, Monseigneur partnership, which are deliberate, which are focused and which are aimed at sustainable internal development complementary to what the immigration would have vacuumed out. Institutional capacity building, to ensure that the home systems are attractive enough to retain and absorb skilled nationals, but they can also attract foreign nationals for the development that can be had as well as service recipients because of the quality of the service locally. And regional collaboration, where we take at heart and are very happy for some of the examples that Executive Secretary reminded us of during the session that are already available, so that we do not have to reinvent the wheel is something that we must keep in mind all the time. Sharing models, pooling resources and advocating for ethical recruitment standards across our hemisphere. With this, Madam Chair, we believe the time is ripe indeed to elevate the conversation beyond just the loss and bring it to one of leverage, where we stand ready to collaborate with each other and to build on the best practices. and to build on the best practices that we have been, that we have shared here and we continue to experience together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Grenada. Since there are no additional requests for the floor, I extend my gratitude to member states for their offers of cooperation and contributions to today's discussion. I further propose that CD express its appreciation to our invited experts for their participation and instruct the secretariat to compile a summary of the cooperation opportunities presented today. Delegations are encouraged to share these offers through the CooperNet platform. It is so decided. Delegates, in the interest of time, we will defer the report on the Americas Competitive Exchange, Illinois, to the next meeting of the CD. I thank you for your cooperation. In that case, we now move to the procedural matters concerning the sectorial ministerial processes under the CD framework. We begin with the convocation of the 10th Inter-American Meeting of Ministers of Culture and Highest Appropriate Authorities, proposed to be held at OAS Headquarters in Washington DC on November 13th and 14th, 2025. The draft resolution for its convocation is presented in document CD Doc 450/25 and is now before the council for consideration. I open the floor for comments on the draft resolution. I see no requests for the floor. As there are no comments, I propose that we proceed with the approval of the resolution, convening the 10th Inter-American Meeting of Ministers of Culture and Highest Appropriate Authorities at OAS Headquarters on November 13th and 14th, 2025. With no objections, the resolution is so approved. We now turn to the convening of the 14th Meeting of the Inter-American Committee on Ports, SIP. I am pleased to give the floor to the delegation of Barbados to present the draft resolution for the convening of this important meeting. Barbados, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My delegation takes the floor to present to the CD the draft convocation, which informs of Barbados' offering to host the 14th Regular Meeting of the SIP, CIP, which is to be held from June 16th to 18th, 2026, in Bridgetown under the theme "The Scope of Artificial Intelligence: Reshaping Strategies for Sustainable and Secure Ports", as placed under the resolution of Montevideo 2025, as contained in documents CECIP/RES 1-24. My delegation seeks the support of member states in approving this document, which will authorize the hosting of the 14th Regular Meeting of the Inter-American Committee on Ports, CIP, as well as approve the draft agenda for the 14th Regular Meeting of the CIP and the necessary actions to facilitate. The Inter-American Committee on Ports, CIP, is a committee of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development, CD, established by Resolution AG/RES 157327-098 in accordance with Articles 93 and 77 of the Charter of the Organization of American States, the OAS, and Articles 5 and 15 of the Statutes of CD. Article 5 of the Rules of Procedure of the CIP provides that the committee shall hold a regular meeting at least every three years. At the 13th Regular Meeting of the CIP, which was held in June 2023, and in compliance with the CIP Rules of Procedure and the CEDI Sectoral Ministerial Meeting Cycle, Barbados has offered to host the 14th Regular Meeting of the CIP in 2026. Madam Chair, globally, ports are the principal links in the maritime and waterway transportation supply chain. Barbados believes that such a platform, composed of the highest national government authorities for the port sector and its purpose, serves only to the benefit of our Americas to strengthen hemispheric cooperation. AI is redefining economic opportunities and placing technology-innovation-and-knowledge-intensive services at the heart of national development strategies. It will notably bring growth and therefore competitiveness to the economies of the Americas. My delegation therefore places before the consideration of the CD that matter, that member state, sorry, move via acclamation and, in the spirit of consensus, to approve the draft convocation of the 14th Regular Meeting of the Inter-American Committee on Ports, CIP, in Bridgetown, Barbados, between June 16th and 18th, 2026. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Barbados, for your kind offer to host the next meeting of the Inter-American Committee on Ports in 2026. I open the floor to delegations whom wish to comment on or refer to this item. I see no requests for the floor. There are no comments, there are no objections. I therefore propose that we adopt the resolution, convening the 14th Regular Meeting of the SIP in Bridgetown, Barbados, from June 16th to 18th, 2026, and approve the corresponding draft agenda. Approved. Finally, we consider for approval the 2025-2027 Work Plan of the Inter-American Committee on Science and Technology, COMCIT, as set out in document CD REMCIT CD Doc 2/25 REV 4. It is important to note that in accordance with the guidelines for ministerial meetings under the CD framework, this work plan corresponds, pardon me, this work plan responds to the mandates issued by the Science and Technology Authorities during the meeting of ministers held in December 2024 and was adopted, pardon me, and was developed based on discussions at the planning meeting of COMCIT authorities held in March 2025. Following that meeting, the secretariat circulated the draft work plan and incorporated the input from member states. This input is reflected in the revised document, which was agreed upon at the meeting of the Committee on Policies on May 20th, 2025, and is now before this council as document CD REMCIT CD Doc 2/25 REV 4. Once adopted, it will be reclassified and redistributed as a CD document. I now open the floor for comments or observations from delegations. With no objection, I propose that this council approve the 2025-2027 Work Plan of the Inter-American Committee on Science and Technology, COMCIT, as presented. Approved. We have now concluded all items on our order of business. I open the floor for any additional matters that delegations may wish to raise. I see no requests for the floor. Once again, therefore, I express my sincere appreciation to all delegations and to our esteemed panelists for their active participation in today's meeting. The experiences shared and the recommendations proposed not only reflect the common challenges that we face but also reiterate our shared responsibility in addressing them. I look forward to continuing our collaboration as we work together to create enabling environments that retain talent and strengthen regional cooperation. This meeting is adjourned. I thank you.